Testing. Testing. Others. Echo.
Echo, echo.
Echo, echo, echo.
Echo, echo.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna get started with the May 30th Planning and Zoning Meeting. The first thing on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all stand, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the greatness of God.
Okay, Maureen, roll call, please.
Jim Daly.
Here.
Andrew Lou Millard.
Here.
Anne Georgie.
Here.
Mithy Zygmunt.
Here.
Ryan Rogan.
Here.
Don Beale, ask to be excused.
Okay.
Scott Hamel.
Here.
Michael Pashet, ask to be excused.
Okay.
John Diken.
Here.
And Steve Biella Jr. I didn't hear from Steve, but he's not online. He's usually online.
Yeah, I don't see that he's online either. Maybe he's running late. Okay.
He'll jump in a couple.
Not present.
Not present. Okay.
You have one alternate that can be seated?
Okay, and so why don't we do that? That's John. We'll seat John for the meeting.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes from the May 2nd meeting. Any comments? Found them to be very detailed.
Motion approved.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, at the request of staff, I'd like to ask the Commission to consider moving item 5D, sorry, 6D Kokomo for 166 Old Brickyard to consider postponement of the public hearing to the June 20th regular meeting because there are additional site plan details needed for analysis and we're not certain that the Butters notice was accurate.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any, well, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Now you need to postpone.
Yeah, okay, so now we need to make a motion to postpone that item, which is the item 6D Kokomo 166 Old Brickyard. Need a motion to postpone.
Motion postpone to 8/20.
To 6/20.
June 20.
Oh, that's way too far.
Yeah, way too far.
6/20.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone to June 20th. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Next.
Can I just explain today?
Yep.
A question that the, in order to remail the Butters notice, it's when the 10 days prior to the meeting, it can't be postponed only to the 6th. It would have to, they need the 10 days before the meeting.
Oh, gotcha.
10 days already passed for the 6th. That's why it can't be the 6th.
Thank you.
On the 6th.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Commission Business Item A, Extension of 90 Days to Record Approved For Lot Subdivision of Pistol Brook Holdings LLC, 1709 Kensington Road. And, okay, so let's start with that.
So I actually had asked for some revisions to the Mylar for filing and didn't realize that they had submitted that Mylar in time for the deadline to file Mylar and now, in order to get it signed and filed, we needed an additional extension. So I'm requesting that. That was our department's mistake. The Chair signed the Mylar for filing, recording of that approved subdivision. And this would be the second extension that's allowed by.
I will, I will make the motion to grant the 90-day extension.
Second.
Who was the second? John? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Those in favor of the extension?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Item B, Special Permit Modification Application of Peter LaPointe on behalf of Coalvest Kensington LLC for a change of use to allow fast food use, Jersey Mike's at 1041B Farmington Avenue, property of Coalvest Kensington LLC in the CCD 2 Zone.
I just want to make a note that the staff report, pretty short, but it's in the supplemental package.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Megan Hope. I'm an attorney with Altrin Pearson in Glastonbury. I'm here tonight representing the Coalvest Group, who are the owners of 1041 Farmington Avenue. That's the lot sort of sandwiched between Farmington Avenue and Porter's Pass. It has the CVS and then the recently approved Starbucks with a drive-through. We did get a special permit and site plan approved on December 15th of 2022. That involved the change of use to convert that former blockbuster building into the two tenant spaces, one being the Starbucks drive-through, which is considered a restaurant fast food use with a drive-through. And then the remaining portion of the building, which is 1,650 square feet, was left at retail at that time. We now have a tenant for that remaining space. It's Jersey Mike's. That's also considered a restaurant fast food use and so we're asking for a modification or amendment to that December 2022 special permit to allow that use to change for the remainder of the building. My understanding is that your first meeting in May, you did determine that that was a change that could be considered minor, which is why you put it on your agenda tonight, not as a public hearing, but something that can be processed under Section 7E2 of the regulations. I did want to point out that the parking requirement for retail or for a fast food restaurant is the same. So we still comply with the parking requirements because they were the same. We have no other site plan changes that are required for this tenant. Everything will be internal. There's already a place, a spot in the monument sign where they can put their name in and a spot on the wall sign. So no other changes are required for this use, but we're happy to answer any questions that the Commission has.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question?
Maureen, do you have any comments or concerns?
I do just want to clarify that the parking is different for fast food, but they have the adequately provided parking for it. The retail is one for $250, fast food is one for $125, but they have the mix is, is there. Sorry. They will need, you know, standard comments, Central Connecticut Health District approval. It's a food use that, the site plan that was approved back in 22? Yep, 2022, be updated with a new parking chart to show the use change and any use changes that need to be shown. They obviously will need to work with Kensington Fire District as well if there's any permitting required from them, if it's not already all plumbed in. And again, the signage, standard signage comment that zoning requirements are.
Okay.
I only got one question maybe. We discussed this before, I think, in the approval that they put that extra parking places in the rear, which I think it was a good thing that they did. But we discussed that that may be designated employee parking of the plaza people, you know, the the, because this is a food thing, the first one to run in to get a cup of coffee, the other one to run in and get sandwiches, you know. If employees park right in front of those establishments, then it's going to be a problem for customers. So if those parking places, the extra parking places can be designated for employees of the businesses, you know, I think that'd be benefit to the whole project.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can do that.
Okay, any other questions from the Commission?
And I will, I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments and with Mr. Zygmunt's request that those rear parking spaces be designated employee parking.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, subject to staff comments and subject to identifying the rear parking area as employee designated. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Thank you. Nice and easy, right? Thank you. Next on the agenda, Site Plan Amendment, Application of Leoni Realty and Development LLC for Proposed Parking Modifications and Drainage Improvements at 63 Fuller Wave in the GI Zone. Maureen, is there anything on this?
I think we'll have their presentation.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Civil and Survey, I have a couple color render. Maybe once, I don't want to.
Yes, sure. If you can direct it in a way that kind of everybody can see.
For us, thank you. I thought, I thought the staff report was in the package. I'm not finding the staff report, so now I'm get a staff report on this? I'm not finding my copy of it.
Staff comments right here.
Other than the
That's all.
Plan or report. Okay, I'll have to find it.
Just with our original?
Got it? For this?
I think so.
Was in your original package perhaps? Okay, I must have pulled it to right out.
You want to.
Maureen, do you want that map to pull in so it can be viewed on screen or is it okay? Way too much paperwork.
Maureen, do you like?
Okay.
It's all right. I was pulling that up.
I don't think I have that.
We have a good try.
We do.
Madam Chair, again for the record, my name is Stephen Judas with the Office of Coal Civil and Survey located at 876 South Main Street in Plansville, tonight here on behalf of Leoni Realty and Development LLC. The property we're discussing is 63 Fuller Way. Mr. Leoni is the owner of Air Temp Mechanical Systems and they occupy this property. And he's growing approximately, I think, 140 employees now. He employs at this location and parking is becoming a problem for him. So we're proposing to revise the parking area on the south side of the building. There's an existing parking area there that contains 20 parking spaces and we're looking to bring that up to 45 spaces. We have designed a stormwater management system underground, which will collect the water and store it and then discharge it slowly into an existing drainage system on site that then runs out to Fuller. So Fuller Lane, Fuller Way, sorry. So we did submit the plans. We received some comments from the town engineer. We did revise the plans very minor, more about drainage calculations and details than anything else. We are proposing additional landscaping to meet the landscape requirements throughout the parking lot, shade trees and additional landscaping and so, and such. But generally, it's an improvement to an existing facility and he's excited to expand here in town and happy to answer any questions that you have for us tonight.
Okay. Maureen, do you want to share with us anything on this?
So I think it's important to note that engineers, engineering comments were addressed in their revised plan, so with drainage and items requiring the abtech filters. We don't really have any, you know, bonding required and staff is fairly satisfied with this plan for the most part, except for those weeks during permitting.
Does the Commission, anybody have questions, concerns? Thoughts?
One thing I did want to mention, Madam Chair, was the curb cut is an existing curb cut. We're going to utilize the existing curb cut and work the, rework the driveway from that location. So there's no change in how the site is accessed.
Oh, okay, thank you. Commission? No questions?
I will make the motion to approve the site plan amendment with staff comment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, subject to staff comments. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you. I think we're, we're in an easy mood tonight.
No pain so far.
Okay, next on the agenda, Restoration Plan Conservation Area Encroachment, Decormier Woods Subdivision, Brittany's Path adjacent to Lot 13-1. Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
My name is Peter Nero. I represent full both parcels on either side of your right away. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions you guys regarding this mystery.
I need to get my
Reporting secretary to get names in that are correct. So during the, if I may, we discovered during inspections of the new dwellings along Brittany's Path that a swath of property as depicted on, in the drawing, the trees had been removed. Mr. Nero has bought the lot at the end of the street, at the end of the cul-de-sac. And, and then there's the open space that's owned by the Homeowners Association that wraps around the entire development. And then Mr. Nero owns the property to the south of that and goes up towards Savage Hill Road and had created this connection by removing trees and it wasn't merely a walking path, you know, vehicles could have traversed it, you know, wide. So we reached out, talked to him. He got, received an enforcement order and he and his engineer met with myself and the zoning enforcement officer out on site. I think zoning enforcement officer might have gone out a couple of times. We went through a couple of discussions with Mr. Bonji Ovani, his engineer, with regard to a planting plan, a restoration plan. Last month I brought the restoration plan to, or earlier this month, to, that is the most recent iteration you see to conservation. They were noted that, they know we have a couple of people on this commission that are also know trees quite well, but did note that they seem to be the same varieties, but thought it could be bulked up a bit and with some additional understory growth. That was their comments. You know, we have a number of areas of town that open space and our conservation easements have been encroached into and we're trying to make those a priority to have maintained as well as getting the markers back out there on those properties that they're missing on. Now, these lots in particular did not have any permits yet, structures to go up, so they weren't required to have been marked. We make sure they're marked. Usually when they put up the soil erosion controls, we ask that the soil erosion control be at that line, if not further in, if it only needs to be further in, so that trees don't get disturbed behind it. Or, and before CO, they need the marker up that says that, you know, you're at the limit of an area that's not to be disturbed. So this is open space. It's not conservation area. It's designated as open space. I think in your package I included the subdivision plan. You can see how, how it's designated and the approximate location of the, I think I'm I just squiggled it in there as to the encroachment, so, but I did feel it was up to the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine what the appropriate replanting was.
Can you explain this to me a little bit? Lot 11 is owned by who now? The Conley?
Lot 10 and 11 are owned by me.
Okay.
This side is owned by me.
The 809 Spruce Brook is owned by you?
This part of this farm on this side here.
Yeah.
And then I bought lot 10 and 11 here.
Okay, and where did Nero come after this?
That's me.
Oh, you're Nero?
Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't even looking at your face. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Been a while, Tim.
Yeah, it's been a while. Yes, yeah. Okay.
So I, oh, I didn't bring it up. Share my screen, sorry.
What?
This lot here is the undeveloped lot on Brittany's Path. The swath goes through somewhere in there and this is owned by him as well.
So, Maureen, can you clarify? The open space is not an easement, it's owned by the town?
No, it's owned by the Homeowners Association.
Owned by the Homeowners Association.
But it was a requirement of the subdivision. It is an open space subdivision, so open space was required.
So how is So how is it an enforcement issue for the town if it's owned by the homeowners association?
I believe the town required it as open space with the conditions and if the subdivision was going to be changed, even if they were going to do walking paths or process, or some sort of recreation in that area or whatever, that it would change the subdivision plan that you saw and therefore should get approval for those immunity amenities perhaps that they might put in their open space.
May I ask a question? Was it for sure? That written like that in the, in the subdivision plan?
It's written as open space.
For the town to control?
No, I, I, it's my professional opinion that the planning and zoning commission made the determination based on the application that that was to be open space and therefore a change to that open space would require town approval. To change the subdivision that was approved.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if any, depending on anyone owning it, the town, the land trust or a private owner, it's supposed to be open space.
And it's not conservation land. I do want to qualify that it saved, it was dedicated as open space, not, you know, undisturbable. So the level of its disturbance, subject to some of those decisions, but the other factor there is it's still a unaccepted subdivision. Subdivision is not closed out. It's not finished. The road's not accepted by the town yet. So that's the other factor of being under the purview of the planning and zoning commission. It's, it's still an active, open subdivision.
Is there anything in the approval that we have in effect that prohibits the removal of trees or is, because I look at it like it's still open space, still open? Was there?
I think you could make that decision. I don't recall. I didn't, I, you know, we did the enforcement order actually a couple of years ago, a couple of zoning officers, the first order went out with, it went with Carol. And I did a lot of research when we found it and she and I both did. And I don't remember that detail. Usually don't send an order unless I have to back it up.
Yeah.
Um, but I can't say that I would miss looking for a nuance. If you have concern with that, we can certainly look at the recorded documents. We can look into it before you make a determination as to whether that's necessary.
I, I, a lot, a lot of them we do no clearing by, from this spot to this spot, you know, and it's because of the open space, you know. We put up regulations in there or something in there saying no clearing.
But the markers weren't in yet, right?
Markers, it's not conservation. Conservation usually do the markers, right? But, but in this case, I think probably that markers should be put in, saying that it's open space. And normally we ask for them if, you know, if even not a conservation, but I would say the plan has the space, what's this, open spaces for town or homeowner.
It is homeowner association.
It is homeowner.
We know it's already been transferred to the homeowners.
You don't know about the wording in there, no clearing or whatever.
I do have the purposes of the reservation of open space parks and playgrounds that might, from the regulations.
Yeah.
So the purpose is one, maintain and enhance the conservation of natural and scenic resources. Protect natural streams or water supply, promote conservation of soils and wetlands. Enhance the value to the public of abutting or neighboring parks, forests, wildlife preserves, nature reservations or sanctuaries or other open spaces. Enhance public recreation opportunities, promote orderly development and protect ridgelines. The commission shall require the dedication of open space or land for recreation in locations with public access deemed proper and adequate by the commission for subdivisions not developed, oh, that's not developed, this open space subdivision, I'm sorry. It was still, it was an open space subdivision, so that's still reservation.
Did I mean any of those requirements?
Oh, it can be.
You cleared for, for your own purpose, not, not for the purpose of the subdivision itself in terms of so typically regardless of whether it's conserved, if, if there's going to be walking paths or anything, I mean, I've had many of these through the years. I mean, it's, it's typically proposed in the subdivision application. I do agree with Maureen. I mean, there is the expectation that although, although there's not a conservation easement, if you will, it's still open space. And the idea is that it would be used for passive recreation and that, and that, and that's the expectation. I mean, it's you know, and, and I think clearly from the language that you have in your subdivision, subdivision regulations, that's what's conveyed. So, you know, with a conservation easement, there's a certain form that you has us use and there's a lot more to it, but with something like this, you know, the idea is that if, if they're going to do something with the open space to change its, its condition, its existing condition, they're going to get approval for it. So that you're making sure that it is again being preserved as open space. So not, not for this purpose of what he's gauging.
No, well, and I suppose that with the intended use, it opens the possibility of public use to access to your farm.
Oh, I am going to build a house right here. And right here. So, you know.
Well, it protects your value of your lot, you know, for people don't develop right up to your back line. There's open space behind it. You know, it, it, it improves the value of your, your subdivision by the open space. And yes, sometime, you know, passive recreation, they put a little trail through it to walk in trail or something through it. But that's the purpose of it basically is.
Well, and the open space surrounds the subdivision. It's not just abutting that lot or your lots.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else have questions, comments, thoughts?
I'd like to say one more thing when I, when you give me that.
Go right ahead.
Well, just so you, you know, the trees that we cut down were dead. Right? I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not, but they were dead. And we cut down two trees that were right here in the middle. And we're proposing putting two, four, six, eight back in lieu of two dead ones. Now, there are more dead ones. Some of them, one of, I think one is completely dead and then you got a lot of toppers on the top that are dead, that are in there. That need to be addressed at some point. Who would address, I mean, I could do it, but who addresses that?
Well, usually if trees need to be removed, the tree warden, you notify the town and the town would go out. The town's tree warden, warden would say, yeah, they're dead.
Berlin has a tree warden?
Yeah, they're required.
All right. So I'm just getting in touch with him.
Yeah, call the engineering department and, and, or our department. I won't put, alert him to go check for trees.
You know where to find some trees, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Over Kelsey Street now or what?
I'm ready to plant, ready to, to fix it up.
So if I may, I can read one more passage from the, the regulations with regard to the conveyance of open space. Open space areas shall be conveyed by the applicant at the stage and condition agreed upon about the approved subdivision. And may be conveyed in any of the following means as determined by the commission. The second is deeded to a homeowners association within the subdivision upon terms and conditions as approved by the commission, which will protect the public welfare and assure the continued use of the open space for the intended purpose. A copy of the proposed homeowners association deed and bylaws of the homeowners association should be submitted with the application for subdivision. So that would have been reviewed at the time. That was, would have been back, I believe in twenty nineteen or eighteen that this division was approved, or was the plan.
Um, so do you have any thoughts on the, the approval for the removal of the trees as part of this restoration overall? You're comfortable with that being a separate matter or should it be part of this?
I think you acknowledging that there may be from time to time, trees found to be dead and should be taken out of the area because they might fall or hurt someone. You know, we do have open spaces. There's lots of open space and lots of trees to fall that are out there in the open space and they then provide a a home and habitat and regeneration of the, of the forested areas. But there are also those that could, are more easily accessible and you kind of want those out of the way so they don't fall on somebody's house or a yard that's actually within their own land or, or otherwise, you know, maybe they're close to a trail. Either, you know, there's a lot of other reasons. So I think acknowledging that, but I think that can be handled separately by the tree warden. And our staff, we work kind of, he checks with us. We, we talk to each other usually.
I don't think it's a big process, you know.
Not at all. It's quick.
Go to the tree warden and you say, hey, this one, this one, this one I want to take down and I want to replace it with similar tree.
Well, you know what? Who takes them down? Me or the, the town?
Well, so that was going to be my next question.
In this, in this instance, if it's in the homeowners association area and it would be the homeowners association that would be asking for permission and then doing it.
So you guys are just the police here?
I guess technically the tree warden is for the removal.
Alright.
Um, but, and so the question that was kind of coming to mind for me as we're thinking about this as a possibility is if Mr. Nero is going to be replacing trees within property that he doesn't own. Is there any concern for liability and is that an area that the town either has?
You'd want the homeowners association to agree to any work he does in the area.
Sign off.
He should, he should go to the homeowners association.
There, there's not a homeowners association?
Yeah.
No?
Oh, there's something being there.
Well, who's the, you the developer?
I mean, I'm the developer of those two lots, but there's no homeowners association.
Yeah, but there was developer, developer.
It was the farm here, Ray, the farm.
It was Ray DeConde. Are you alive?
Oh, thanks.
Because whoever the, the builder or developer was basically should sign off on it until there's association. Yeah. Yeah, until the association is formed. The one that should sign off with the developer.
So you guys don't sign off on this? I have to go to her?
Well, we don't own the land.
We don't own the land.
I know, but I paid a ton of money to have this thing made because you guys sent me an order. But now you're telling me that I just go to her to see her?
Well, it's a liability, liability.
Liability, we have insurance. So we're, we're covered liability wise. All state will do all the work. So liability, we're all set. You're saying approval.
Well, it's, 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 I don't know. The moral liability thing is that you're going in there, working on that land and you break your legs and it's supposed to be a homeowner. Okay.
Company's covered, we're covered.
I think the, the issue I guess is, is that that open space belongs to an HOA that hasn't been formed yet. So right now you're kind of in a little bit of a limbo where it's not your land. It's not the town land, but it's somebody's land. And yeah, should, should belong to the HOA. So
until it's.
You need the permission of the body that owns that land to do work to it.
Be the developer.
So that would be the developer who was ever installing the building lots.
Okay.
Does Maureen know? So I had the, you know, on the G I S, you could see that the homeowners association owns it. So there is an ownership of the homeowners association. With me sharing my screen, it's kind of hard for, because I don't have that second computer today. It's kind of hard for me to search the land records right now as far as whether or not.
The assessor card indicates.
The assessor's card says.
But it doesn't, it doesn't indicate where the information is coming from to say that there's a homeowners association.
There's not a homeowner.
I understand, sir. I, I understand. And it wouldn't be on the land, so there wouldn't be any way of identity.
Yeah. The developer forms the home, homeowners association and then it's transferred to the, the homeowners as a group. So it's, too, it's transferred to the homeowners.
Right, so Decormier may still own Decormier Woods homeowners association.
That's what I'm thinking of where condos.
As opposed to the people.
Association works.
So is this something?
Builder has the association until he gives it to the condo association.
Is this something that staff can resolve if we approve? This, just.
We should really be dealing with the homeowners association rather than Mr. Nero. He might have.
Well, we know he's the one that did it and he admitted to it and he's worked with it and
Yeah.
We were, we were all of the feeling that it would be, he would, it was his responsibility. So he got the order.
Okay.
Um, which is because it was clear and, I mean, we had discussions with him. He worked with us very, very cooperatively. I want to lay that out. But that's a question that I'm sorry I overlooked as far as what that would be, but I am thinking that the Decormier estate or, or.
Nice piece of property.
We do, we have found the declaration of space covenants. And I'm thinking I would have gone through it, but again, that was a couple of years ago.
I walked that property.
Right, in the.
Years I walked the, the Carmel.
Oh, there, yeah.
I watched that.
I used to drive my horses right through there.
Yeah.
You know, this team of horses and drive all the way down. I, I still drive them, but now I have to go all the way around.
There was all kinds of plans on that piece of property.
Yep. And then he wooded, went in there locked it.
Yeah.
Made a mess of it.
He did. Would be the price that you are you offering them? Not made another developer.
Yeah, he did not want to sell that. Not want to sell it. I would have bought it and made the farm, farm all the way.
Yeah.
He did not want to sell it.
No.
He wanted his name on a development. He got it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, did not want to sell that room.
So the, in the interest of time, it's up to the commission of course, but we can continue the researching out the covenants because there's, you know, you have a covenant and then a revised covenant and there's a number of documents here. We'll have to go through them to find most recent language or the original language for the open space area itself. Most of them probably referred to as or changes based on other properties being bought and they have to refile. So there's. Okay, so in, in the open space area, the cutting, injuring or endangering of the tree, this is just provision seven randomly in the opens in the declaration. The cutting, injuring or injuring or endangering of trees or other vegetation or flora within said open space areas without the express rest permission of the board, commission or agency legally empowered to act as the planning and zoning commission of the town of Berlin. Sue it to the general statute, section eight nineteen. I don't know how to say eight. That's sequence.
That's, that's, sir, exact, exact, exactly.
Initial source.
So, yeah, and, and at the beginning, it says the use of the open space areas for any purpose whatsoever other than for open or natural space for aesthetic, passive, recreational, scenic purposes.
What, what does that mean recreational?
Passive recreation.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Well, a lot, a lot of, there's, there's certain types of recreational activities and I won't get the whole list.
Can you email me the list?
Sure.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, 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 again, there's sort of a form concept that comes to, you know, form concept. not one conservation. So, yeah.
Walking trails.
Walking trails is the most.
Riding horses?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a distinction between active and passive recreation and so the prospect might fall under passive.
They sometimes they put a little weight lift station along the trail or or, you know, than exercise days.
Okay, so that's giving us the authority. Okay, so we can, we can work on this. Okay, so are we satisfied with what's proposed for replacement?
Anybody else? I'll make the motion to approve then with the staff comment.
Second.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Sorry, who's?
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. They're outside.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for indulging our questions. Lot of control. Okay, next on the agenda, we're starting with public hearings. Is there a call to the?
There is.
Public hearings.
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission notice the public hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at a special meeting on Thursday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty four at seven PM in the Town Council Chambers, Burlington Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. A subdivision of Kokomo two LLC for a two lot subdivision of forty-four Randdecker's Lane, MBL two dash three dash three dash five for a lot created at Zero Club Drive. B, special permit with site plan amendment application of Harrison Polo Torak at two three two Mill Street for Rebel Dog Coffee Company, Berlin in the CCD two zone. C, application of Tom Kokomo, Kokomo Bros. to construct in addition and in addition add a propane filling station and wall pos used at one six six unit at two twelve Old Brickyard Lane in the planned industrial zone. The application and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Burlington Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut. Dated this fourteenth day of May, twenty twenty four at Burlington, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. New Britain Herald legal notices slash classified advertising dates of publication Friday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty four and Friday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Posted with Burlington Town Clerk Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda for public hearings, a special permit with site plan amendment application of David Camacho, Camacho Enterprises LLC to add a proposed automotive use dealer use per Berlin zoning regulations, section six G, three G and eleven R at eighty-six Woodlawn Road, property of J and S Enterprises Incorporated in the BT one zone. And so I understand that engineering comments are pending, so we likely will continue this this evening, but please please proceed.
I brought over the site plan.
So you have, if I may, you, a new site plan or updated site plan was received on May sixteenth. That was in your package. They have added the infiltration galleries. You can see those. There with me for one minute. I'm going to pull it up on the screen for anybody that joined the meeting. Give me one second. Sorry. Yeah, so there is a couple of things that still are. Just the planet was.
Because.
But I'm not seeing it there.
Yeah, it's a minor thing, but I do remember that our regulation required a repair bay for vehicles sold. And it showed that on the back part of the map. Right behind where it says existing building and that little block of where it's twenty seven feet by twenty eight feet. And we talked about, you know, just showing a I guess, an entrance and a garage door, but
Yeah, so what I was.
Very minor.
Say up here at the top of the screen, it's not very big. Sorry for the sizing problem. And trying to show it. So up right in this area here, if you can see where I'm talking about, that's what Commissioner Rogan was just talking about. They've shown grass in front of the garage bays. There is, there are or is a bay door there. One, two?
Two.
Two, two bay doors. I knew it was for two cars. I just couldn't remember whether it was split or not. So that is something that I was going to recommend be corrected prior to any permitting. The, they did add per the town engineer's comments, and unfortunately, he's been out of the office unexpectedly this week. But the proposed infiltrator galleries under the parking area up at the top of the site, the north end of the site. They've added that. They changed these islands, the landscape islands, or rather, the parking islands at the ends into landscaped grass area islands. Those had been shown striped previously, so those all add to pervious surfaces and are, based on conversations with Mike, our town engineer, are responsive to his comments. I think he would. I hate to speak for him, but I do not think he would be opposed to his final approval of the drainage plan, now that there is a drainage plan being tweaked, subject to his permitting by him as opposed to having to wait to make a decision. Although you can receive his comments when he returns to the office, we're hoping by mid next week. The other comments, other than whether or not the landscape islands be landscaped with any plantings as opposed to just loomed and seeded, was one of the concerns I had. I did note in the previous, in the staff report that was already distributed that the I expect that when they go for their motor vehicle license, they're going to be, and the zoning office has to sign off on that, that they'll have to designate the use area for the dealership, the license, as opposed to the area, what areas are dedicated. The licenses I've been exposed to, the state has asked for that. Again, it's not a Berlin zoning regulation that's, and so if their requirements changed, that might have happened. They did, they do show twenty display spaces. They're meeting the parking requirement at this time. Now it's whether the site works and agree with the special permit use. I think at the first hearing, I explained the difference, how zoning board of appeals used to have the statutory authority to and therefore was, it was the town's practice that they reviewed the the applications. Unless there were major site changes, of course, the planning zoning commission always had the site plan aspects as well, but now that statute has been eliminated, they don't have to go to ZBA anymore, so all those considerations that ZBA usually looked at are under P and Z now. That was all explained previously.
So the landscaping was what was jumping out at me on the plan also. And I, I know Joan also would like to see additional landscaping. Could we have some street trees installed and maybe a little boost internal where you have space?
Believe it was.
So basically, it's got to meet the, what the So that's the normal thing of our roles anyway. They must meet the staff comments. I think it's all been addressed. I make a motion to approve.
Hold on, this is a public hearing, sorry. Public hearing. Long time.
We just did. We just did. Yes, so this is a public hearing. Does anybody from the audience have comments on this application? Anybody joining us online? If you want to raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised online, but anybody has comments on this application now is the time to do it. Okay, hearing none. Commission, anybody with questions or comments? And is there a notion to hold off for engineer comments or just satisfaction of that?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting, pending engineers' comments.
Can I say something, please? I've been in contact with Mr. Hearn for quite some time until his, he's been out sick or whatever it may be. But he made it clear that as long as I made it right for what he wanted, it should be okay. That's me speaking from him. Like I said, I've always, I've been in contact with him from the beginning on everything that we did.
Thank you.
I'm just speaking on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Can I just look at the dates for the hearing?
I don't necessarily need to bind us to the next regular meeting. It could be whatever meeting is appropriate.
That's only the next, I mean, the next meeting is a week away.
Okay, so.
But I'm worried about the timeline because we're in extension days. So the applicant needs to request the use of extension time. We're in extension days to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Just for discussion, I am happy with staff and engineering staff dealing with it. Personally, I mean, our staff indicated that it seemed that that would be sufficient, that if they got their approval, that the engineering department could, you know, hash out whatever they needed to hash out after the approval.
We can close the public hearing.
I mean, Mike, I understand if the commission would rather, you know, not take that action. I just figured it might be best to have, you know, develop the record as to the engineers' comments just in the normal course, but certainly if the commission decides to vote down my motion, that's understandable.
So, so just to comment on, on that last comment. So, you know, there's always the possibility, and this is not to direct you in any way, but there's always the possibility that you may have questions about the engineering comments. I think that that's the concern that's being expressed. And then that will give you the opportunity to discuss it with the applicant and most importantly, for the applicant to respond. I know he's hopeful that he's going to agree with everything that Mr. Hearn requires of him. But in fairness to him as well, you want to give him that opportunity just in case you don't agree.
It's all to your benefit, sir. You know, I'm just trying to make sure that we do this correctly and we develop the proper record where you can respond appropriately.
Just like you said, he's not, we don't know when he's coming back and what happens if he doesn't. You know, what if he does take longer? I mean, I'm in jeopardy as we speak right now for this time, right?
Thank you.
So are, would you be willing to give the extension or?
I mean, if I have to, I mean, there's nothing I can do. It's up to you guys to do that.
They will say Commissioner Dyke makes a fair point.
You can, if it is that one week and, you know, determined to be in the applicant's best interest, but we find there is a delay with regard to engineering. You can revisit that same motion next week by, with, with a motion that can be revisited next week should not return and have the time to reevaluate this plan because of course the board is backlogging. And it's unexpected absence from the office emergency.
Okay, so the motion is to continue. And seconded, is there any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So the continuation will be till June second, is, uh, sixth, I'm sorry, June sixth?
June next Thursday?
Planning and zoning meeting.
So we just need you to submit next, grant an extension to staff.
Okay. I'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need the motion and seconded?
John made the motion. Scott seconded. Next on the agenda for public hearings, subdivision application of Kokomo two LLC for a two lot subdivision of forty-four Randdecker's Lane map, block lot two dash three dash three dash five for a lot created at Zero Club Drive. Hello?
Evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thomas Kokomo, for the record, one Fitzwilliam Park, Farmington, Connecticut. I believe that you received a staff report from Maureen and I'm in agreement, it's very, it's very, it's thorough and comprehensive and and it goes through detailed.
I'm sorry, would you give us just a second because we're all shuffling. Everybody set?
Thanks.
Okay. You good? I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
So staff prepared a report that was pretty comprehensive. I'm sure you read through it. We, there's some minimal notes that I have. If you, if you, if you, if you have any questions, I can answer. If not, I do believe it's, it's pretty thorough and I'm here alone tonight. Counsel, my counsel is not going to come because they've had briefs back and forth to, with, with corporation counsel and any oral arguments or discussions wouldn't be necessary. I think we've really gotten over that hurdle and we, we feel firmly in our position and we feel as though your discretion are, is, is the conditions for an approval and our engineer stated that Maureen's comments were easily could easily be approved as a condition of approval. There was a lot of like spelling errors and things of that nature that Maureen picked up on. But I'm here. If you have any other questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer.
Maureen or Jennifer comments?
So I just have a very quick comment. Attorney Reiner and I disagree about the matter that really is not something that you're concerned with tonight. You have a re-subdivision application before you, you need to determine whether or not the requirements of subdivision regulations are met. So the, the first cut free split issue is not something that, that you decide tonight. You're focused on the application before you. And he and I disagree quite simply, and it is what it is. And I don't, you know, I don't want to waste your time on that issue because the idea is, is that the submission of the application is meant to rectify. You know, the concern that staff and corporation counsel, so.
Well, I think it's important everyone doesn't mind, even though it's in the staff report, to just give a quick what we're looking at this for the record as much as anything else. The property that was lot five was apparently it was, well, we, we found it appeared on maps in the early fifties. As, you know, and would have been a subdivision at that time, we already had subdivision regulations. Um, the, there are several other lots in that triangle between Rand Decker's Club Drive and Lincoln Street that have been since that time re-subdivided as well and came through the process. So the correct process to have this lot be re-subdivided. There was a deed transfer of the house at forty-four Rand Decker's that included a portion of the lot being transferred with the house that happened last year. Um, and this is, um, what we refer to as an after the fact subdivision, re-subdivision or authorizing that split of the property. Again, the factor that the attorneys, um, disagree on whether that split would have been necessary regardless. In order to split the lot, they've made this application for re-subdivision and therefore the regulations regarding to subdivisions apply. Um, the, of note is the, um, it's a two lot subdivision um, with no open space shown. You have the authority to waive open space. Um, and that was on page two of, of the staff report. I refer to section fifty-four oh three three of the subdivision regulations with regard to that. And the same for weaving of the sidewalks. That's also something under the commission's purview for, and that, um, has further criteria with regard to how far the closest sidewalks are, how far the closest schools are, which, what zones it's in, it ticks those, all those boxes, um, for that. And when you do, um, consider the application, that is something that would need to be voted on separately should you move forward, you know, should, should you have a positive, um, um, move in favor of the subdivision application, re-subdivision application, those would have to be voted on separately. Um, again, we have all those spelling notes, et cetera. Um, and for the record, there is an ever-source easement fifty foot wide that runs along the northerly side of the property. Um, they have shown a building, um, envelope, not calling it a building square, is that separate? But an area that, uh, that meets the minimum requirements for what's needed to, what should be required, is required in the subdivision regulations for the size of a house that must fit, um, that, on the lot and that the, this house they show exceeds that. Um, the development of the lot would be subject to, you know, um, building permits and development approval, engineering, looking at the grading and um, I did note in my staff report that they may expect that when that development plan is looked at, swales are required, guarded, required, et cetera. A specific development plan for a lot is not required in the, in the, in the subdivision regulations, um, except for, for a rear lot in residential. So they, you know, if somebody in, um, it's my interpretation of the regulations that if somebody came along and said, oh, that's not the house I want. I want, you know, say this is a colonial, they want a cape and it has different dimensions, that would just be part of the building permit. So despite, they have to show they have a development plan that'll work, which is what was applied on, I think, page two of their, the page, um, for, you know, the, the plan set. Um, but again, those are, um, during building permitting. Um, let me see what else there was. Again, bonding and, and pins to be set, et cetera. That's all items to be approved as well as their, um, utility hookups. That's all part of permitting. Otherwise, we did not, we nothing was called out otherwise that, um, in the subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, any questions?
Clarification. Lot. Club Drive, uh, there'll be Club Drive address or Rand Decker Lane.
This lot will front on Club Drive. The, the existing Lot Five with the house at forty, it has the, the existing structure on the, the previous lot is.
Hey, we're in public hearing. Um, does anybody from the audience have comments or questions? Please step up to the podium and identify yourself. Uh, sign in also, please.
Uh, my name is Alfred Racine. I go by John. My wife Vera and I own thirty-one Club Drive. So we're three lots down from where this proposed development would be, uh, if it's approved. And, um, I barely found out that this process was underway. Um, I opened my mail one day and I thought I had a piece of junk mail because it was not addressed to me by name and it had a form letter in it that had no details. So I called the city and said, what is this and what was happening? So I look out in the audience. I see my neighbors are here tonight to express their concerns and their thoughts. They're my neighbors. The person who wants to do this project isn't my neighbor because he's not being transparent. He's not thinking about the neighborhood. He wants to understandably for commercial reasons, flip a piece of ground and move on. So I oppose this for three reasons. That's the first. The second reason that I oppose it is if you drive down that street, one of the reasons that we moved there four years ago is it has beautiful, large lots that have great landscaping on them, virtually all of them with young children playing in the yards every day. And it's part of the aesthetic of the neighborhood. This looks like a zero lot development to me. Now, I lived in Dallas once and this looks like what they'd built in Capel where you could look out your window and see your neighbor shaving in their bathroom. It's entirely out of character with the neighborhood. My house was built in nineteen seventeen and we take great pains. We had a fire a year and a half ago. We took great pains to have it restored to what it was. Made no attempt to try to turn it into something different because we thought that was an important part of being a good neighbor. We think that applies in this instance too. And, um, so I oppose it because it's out of the character of the neighborhood, both in terms of the land use. The third reason that I oppose it is, is if you haven't been on our street, what you probably don't know is in the triangle of Club, Rand Decker, several blocks along Lincoln, there are not consistent concrete curbs or gutters or for most of, for none of Club Drive and for most of the other two streets, there's no drainage. This is a piece of ground that since we moved in, it's had wonderful natural grass, trees, great cover. I've lived in enough places and had enough homes to know that if you remove the top to build a house, it's going to change drainage. We already have. One of my neighbors is nodding her head. Um, we have a half inch rain and suddenly we'll have six inches of rain flooding into our yards because we're at the bottom of the hill. This will only get worse in my opinion. I don't know the engineering regulations. What I know is, is that if you take away top soil, if you take away the grass, if you take away the trees at the top of the hill, which is where this lot is, there's nothing to stop the rain. It's going to come down a driveway into a drainless road and end up in our yards. Also end up in, in a, like, ground that's across the street by Shuttle Metal Country Club. So I believe it worsens the condition of the neighborhood for everyone else who lives there. So I appreciate your time and your service on the board and, um, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, is there anybody else from the audience that would like to offer comment or have questions on this application? Come on up. Identify yourself, please, and sign in.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Charles Wilbur. I live at eighty Club Drive in Berlin, uh, across the street from the proposed Lot Five A. Get that afterward. Uh, I also, uh, oppose this on a number of grounds, uh, not the least of which I did have to bring to the councils or to the committees' attention. A handwritten in Xerox note with an obscure date in the top left corner was left in the foliage outside my house, uh, ten days before last month's meeting. Actually, it was left two days before, but it was dated ten days before. That was the first attempt at notice from an otherwise sophisticated businessman who seeks to do this business here tonight. On May ninth, I received an actual postmarked letter, but to my address, not to me, not to my wife, and with no return. It is in fact the same handwritten letter with a new handwritten date stuffed, stuffed at the bottom, five thirty twenty-four. Again, as some semblance of notice. We're all here tonight, so clearly we ended up getting the picture, but I want everyone present, the board especially, to get the picture of what this is. Sample a butter's letter with for zoning board of appeals crossed out and then date in parentheses with no date, a budding property owner's name with no name, address, zip, regarding, all blank, to whom it may concern. Uh, once again, no name at the bottom, a scribble that is ostensibly Mr. Kokomo's signature, but without a typed name. And again, no date. Lastly, five nineteen twenty-four, again, to whom it may concern. And finally, including a from name. This is all to prove whether or not there was even notice that someone is here to supposedly improve a neighborhood with a home. To John's point about the, uh, the lot in question to be developed, I see it is up there. I, uh, afraid I only have a photo to go on my phone. You know how large the, uh, paper is. It does, uh, as Mr. Kokomo pointed out, meet the minimum requirements. Uh, in the rear of the house, it meets the minimum requirements by a five foot and four inch margin from the proposed property line. Uh, going to the neighbor's house, uh, to the south, what is currently forty-four Rand Decker and would remain forty-four Rand Decker, but uh, that is, yes, that, that matches by one point nine two inches. It does meet that requirement by less than two inches. The easement for EverSource, uh, that needs to be fifty feet and it is fifty point fifty-one point oh seven. Yes, it, it does meet the minimum requirements from the easement by one foot and eight point four, or point eight four inches. A house doesn't fit here. Uh, we're looking at land that does meet minimum requirements per the letter of the law. But as everyone here is aware, the letter of the law does not necessarily represent the spirit of the same law. Uh, the proposed structure is approximately one thousand nine hundred twenty-seven square feet. Uh, if, if you look at a thirty-eight by forty-eight piece of grass in a neighborhood and think there should be a house there, you are simply missing the point of the neighborhood. Uh, I don't speak for, uh, any of my neighbors. I haven't been elected or appointed. Uh, I know that there's been plenty of correspondence among the neighbors, uh, everyone that I know personally, but uh, again, their, their words may be their own. I, I will not deign to, uh, to speak for them, but I do know that there was one, uh, email chain. I cannot recall to whom it was, uh, within the town. It might have been to the office, the staff office, or it might have been to a member of the board. I was not a party on that email. I was just shown what it said. And at one point it was pointed out that there was no misrepresentation at the time of the, uh, the deed transfer in, uh, twenty twenty-two, I think. Uh, and that there was going to be, in the eyes of everyone, uh, concerned, a subdivision at some point in the future. But no subdivision was done. And as is in the staff report, uh, subdivision wouldn't have matched the regulations in place at the time. In that same staff report, there's a comment on a clarifying, uh, adjustment of what, what the building square means. So that means that if nothing else, this deed was transferred at a time when the building square did not represent the proposed change in the future. This is full of this sort of, at best, underhanded and at worst materially misrepresented lies. It's just, it is set up in a manner, as John pointed out, to take a piece of land in a neighborhood, develop it, flip it and move right along. Uh, I do not know for how many I speak for, but I know that living right across the street from this, I strongly oppose it and am prepared to take any questions from the committee or from anyone here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, just a question for our staff before you go. Would we need a copy of those letters that he just showed the commission for our records?
So they're in the, they're in our file.
Okay.
Well, I think they're all in the file. We, I've reviewed each and that's why he kept resending them.
Okay.
I sent.
All right.
The, the template letter to them, ZBA crossed out, um, because I couldn't immediately find the PDF of the, of P and Z's letter and thought P and Z's was not as thorough as the ZBA's template. Um, again, saw that they were merely crossed out, said, you've got to update the information in there. It, it has these parentheses that say.
It's a sample.
In, in sample and fill in the blanks, you know, put in what it is, type of application, et cetera. So, and then that was that last letter. Thus, you postponed at the last meeting, the notice was in, was determined to be inadequate. So. We were
Okay.
Determined, we were satisfied with the last one that came in.
Did it receipt requested?
I'm sorry?
Is it a receipt requested on?
It's certificate of mailing. That proves that they got mailed. And that's what the statute calls for. The statute does not call for, for people to be home and sign for them. It's on the applicant to mail them, the post office to, so my experience with the certificate of mailing and I went through it, we actually got, had the forms from the post office. She brought us a book of forms at one point. Um, it described to our staff how it's handled and they fill in on the spreadsheet the name and address of each person. It's going to hand the post, um, postal worker, the pile of envelopes and the sheet, and they check this envelope's on the list, this envelope's on the list, this envelope's on the list, and then they stamp it as all these were made. So that's where the postmark comes from. These letters have been mailed, matching the list. And the statute calls for them to be by certificate of mailing, not certified mail. Little one has the, the one that was in your supplemental package is the one that our town engineer circled, um, in the PDF. He has that capability of some misspellings and other things that need to be corrected on the map. Um, I will note, and I'm sorry to interrupt the, um, um, the public comments, but you did receive in your supplemental package as well, um, comments that Mike actually did send in today, so we were kind of happy to see that, but, um, we do have the con, his comment sheet there, town engineers. I'll, I'll read it if you want to, uh, after or now you tell me.
The one you gotta show them up on the screen.
That's the one that, this, this is a copy of the map you got. The big map that was.
I don't have.
Oh, it's probably at the last meeting.
Probably at the last meeting. I don't have.
Oh, so you weren't at the last meeting. You got the, you got the package with this package. Everybody else got that with their last package because we expected it to be opened when we distributed those packages.
Oh, we're due. Thank you, Chair, if you guys want.
I think you can have a seat for now, but thank you. You signed in? Okay, thank you.
Very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Even others sat up there as long as you promised to give me back.
We're sharing.
This is a filed copy if somebody needs it.
Thank you.
No.
Okay, everybody has their maps open. Anybody from the public, uh, that would like to, uh, offer a comment? Come on up, please. Identify yourself and please sign in once you're done.
Just to get it on the radar, I do believe a couple of people, at least one person online wants to speak when it's their opportunity.
Okay.
Um, and so for those of you on Zoom, we do, the chair usually does have the people in the, in the room first and then calls on the um, remote.
Yep.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner and Commission members. Thank you. Uh, my name is Dan Quattrielli.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner and Commission members, thank you, uh, my name's Dan Quattraselli, I live at fifty-seven Club Drive, uh, it's the property directly to the north, uh, bordering this potential re-subdivision. Uh, we were here throughout twenty twenty-two, more specifically in November of twenty twenty-two, as the forty-four Randdecker property was originally proposed here for subdivision. Uh, that proposed subdivision was removed by the applicant, I believe, in December twenty twenty-two, uh, because the proposed building did not meet the town's regulations at the time. If you then fast forward to March of twenty twenty-three, when the property hit the MLS listing online, rather than being listed for point five acres, this property was listed at point five acres. The person that bought the house has stated to the town in their communications throughout the process that they were told at the time of purchase that the property was already subdivided, and that is documented in communications to the town. Uh, so from the neighboring process, I find it just very concerning as a neighbor where I don't understand technically who owns the property that abuts my house. And when I cannot get any sort of clarification on that from neighbors or from the town. Um, I think it's been a, just a very concerning process for everybody involved in the neighborhood, uh, when we're unable to get any sort of answers from our neighbors or from the town as to legitimate ownership of this property. Um, when we've tracked through steps in this process that have still led us to this point, um, and you have the current owner of forty-four Randdecker, who heard the town's report, uh, they asked to sign off on the application, come down to town hall uh, to meet with town representatives, and that individual has not done that. Uh, so I feel as though there's a lot of ambiguity here at best, uh, or just untruthful statements that have been made throughout the process. So, myself, uh, my wife, my family, we are adamantly against this, as we have been in the past. Um, we will continue to oppose it. Uh, we appreciate the support from our neighbors throughout this process, who understand the impact that this has had on us for the past two years. Um, and we appreciate the commission's consideration, your time, uh, and your audience for hearing out our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for signing in also. Anybody else from the audience? Come on up, and uh, once he's through signing in, please identify yourself. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Cooper at eight Randdecker Lane. Um, and all I, uh, nice to see everyone here, and thank you very much for your time. This is, uh, I won't say a thankless job, but it's a lot of time and energy, and I really do appreciate everybody's time. Um, what you don't get from that picture is really, if you could see like, um, a topical, a topography, I took a picture walking the other day with my uh, dog. There are towers, the EverSource towers, uh, with tall grass, which was just cut, I'm sure, just before this meeting. And um, it is, it's an eyesore among other things, but um, if you look at where the forty-four Randdecker is, which is really, uh, the garage is facing Randdecker, where the address is, but the actual front of the house is facing what will be uh, the side of this so-called new property. And when you look at it, the between the tree that has to come down and the and the EverSource easement here, that these towers there, it, I I'd, oh, oh, you can't quite see it as clearly as you can from the ground, but thank you for doing that. Um, it does not feel like, it it feels as if, um, visually and proportionally, you won't even know like where the entrance is, where the exit is. It feels um, crowded, to say the least, it feels an eyesore. And with the towers and this new property in one direction and this other property in another direction, it will look like a puzzle that is misplaced at best and an eyesore at worst. So apart from the drainage, which is very important, and the fact that there may be inches to feet in terms of fitting in the property, if you actually visually walk the property, and I invite you all to do that, it will only make this eyesore here even worse. So again, I know visual isn't going to solve the legal problems, but it's one more factor uh, that I hope you consider. And I really do invite you to walk that, because it's obvious the moment you cross Club to Randdecker there. So I don't want to take more of your time, but I really do appreciate um, consideration, thank you.
June, Maureen, can you point out where that easement is on the map that you pulled up? If we could decipher that?
So you can't see it on the aerial view, but I believe the dashed line is on the planometric view. If it loads, there we go. So there's the easement line. Goes fifty feet south of the, I guess, the center line, or the, where the property lines align for the most part, and fifty feet north of it. A hundred foot wide easement. This is the lot.
And so forty-four, excuse me, forty-four is facing Club?
The house is at an angle.
Oh, yeah. Yes, the the garage is what.
Please don't, you can't speak from the audience, I'm sorry, we, because of the recording?
Yep.
It's just.
People online can't hear what you're saying either.
The portion of the structure facing Club Road is the front, front doors, okay?
I'm actually gonna try, give me one second. I'll get up the street view, but that'll take me a second. So I'm on Randdecker right now, going to the corner of Club. Looking, that's the driveway comes off Randdecker, right at the corner of Club. I'm basically like at the entrance of Shuttle Metal Country Club, where I'm, yeah, here. Then we go down Club, I think, it's pretty. Nice shot, there's a lot of foliage, so you can't really see how the driveway is. The driveway comes in and the house goes that angle direction. I'd be able to get an older view, that maybe if in the winters sometimes.
Sure. I need you at the podium, sorry, just, we.
Yeah, they're all, I'm sorry, they're all well foliage.
Uh, sorry, thank you for recognizing me again, Charles Wilbur of eighty Club. Uh, what we're looking at here is, uh, unfortunately out of date, uh, we, I know that a number of us have some photographs that represented a little more closely, uh, nothing that had been sent in before this meeting. Uh, if if you ask, I'm sure we can find one or two cell phone photos, a a lot of this had been cleared out. The house in this qu, this picture, uh, Mr. Kokomo himself can uh, testify, does not represent what it looks like now. That's a home that he uh, renovated himself, so th- these photos are just out of date. But if you do go uh, farther down the street, using street view here, you may be able to get to where you can see the power lines overhead, and you can sort of picture, you see them in the top of the screen there. That's the tower in question. That tree no longer exists, and it actu- actually represents uh, a spot within the footprint of the proposed house. So the house would be placed right there, and I don't know that you can even see the front of forty-four Randdecker uh, in this photo, because of, again, foliage that is no longer present, but it, you are accurately representing it. Uh, Miss, thank you very much.
Right there.
That you're looking at the front of the house there, and if you go back to the uh, just the the plan map without the uh, satellite view, I suppose, you can see where the facade and the building square, the facade just faces into the corner of the building square from, there you are. Uh, that's the facade of the house, looking back towards where we were just standing. And then the yellow line diagonally at the top of the property is the end of the easement. And if you come in about two inches from the edge of that easement, that's where the corner of the house would be. You very much.
Hey, anybody else from the audience with comments? Come on up and identify yourself, please, make sure to sign in.
Hi, I'm Ariel Wainvino, thirty Randdecker. Um, my house is right next to forty-four Randdecker, um, so all of those trees that were just shown have been cut down. And between that and the EverSource cutting of trees, um.
I've um, experienced flooding in my back and front yard, and I can only imagine this will increase the flooding.
Um, so, I mean, this, I just would like to know what was amended, that all of a sudden this house can now be built, and I do encourage you to drive by, because this is just getting, just just thrown into a spot where I never imagined another house would be abutting my backyard, and also obstructing my view, where I used to look at a pine that's now gone. I'll be looking at a tall, structural house that's not going to fit in the neighborhood. Um, and the certain aesthetic that we do have, um, it is not for the good of the neighborhood. So uh, again, my question was, the amendment, uh, what changed here? Now a house can go here.
Thank you.
Uh, question. Where is the water, do you think, coming from now that all these trees and things are down? Are you down slope from that lot there, or?
Thirty, uh, so in the back here, the back of my yard is flooded, and then also kind of, well, I guess I get hit with both the back and the front, because I'm kind of sloped down now. Um, and then the back is sloping, so I have this center, uh, that's now happening, and everybody just keeps cutting trees. And no drink is being put in. Nothing's been done to move the water anywhere except for into our yard.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hello, thank you, uh, my name is Amanda Quattraselli, I live at fifty-seven Club Drive. Um, I live next door to the proposed property, um, I also uh, oppose this property um, for a few, a few reasons. Um, and to give you some background, so last year, um, I put in a complaint to the town that the property was not being maintained, that portion of forty-four Randdecker. And when I called the town, I was told that that portion of the property belonged to forty-four Randdecker. Um, the conversation I had back and forth was, that was not my impression from the last zoning and planning meeting. I thought that uh, Mr. Kokomo owned that property. Again, I was assured that the responsibility of that land belonged to forty-four Randdecker, as there was no subdivision on that lot. Um, so instead of continuing with the complaint, I spoke with my neighbor about maintaining that property, and my husband spent about four hours and or more clearing that land, because we thought we were being neighborly. Um, four hours of time, plus taken away from my family, um, and he lost his earbuds in the process too, which were about two hundred dollars. So, um, fast forward to now, uh, we put in another complaint for the property not being maintained. Um, again, between my husband and the order, owner of forty-four Randdecker, they maintained that property all throughout the summer. Um, so again, you know, it's springtime, things are growing, we put another complaint, and now things have changed, and now it is the, it was determined that it is the applicant's responsibility to clear that land, um, and and to mow it, which was done, again, yes, right before this meeting. So really, my question is, what changed from last summer to now the spring, where it became the applicant's responsibility and not forty-four Randdecker's responsibility to maintain that property?
I can partially answer that, if you would. But us gaining information. So we, it was subsequent to that, that we found out only a portion of the property had been transferred. The, you know, we generally look up on the GIS, and even still, if you look up on the GIS, particularly our zoning officer, who's fairly new to the, you know, especially last year, very new to our systems and and whatnot, if you look this up, the whole, the entire parcel shows up as Johnson and Barry's property, and being still forty-four Randdecker's, because there was no subdivision map that prompted this property to be split on the GIS and picked up by our GIS contractor to split it, they don't do, um, they don't update by deeds, they update by now. So it's, you know, we've spent lots of hours, or that these neighbors can attest that staff has listened, has tried to figure out who, what, and then we have the question that the attorneys are in disagreement on as to whether that transfer was, you know, something that, you know, how to give that answer for um, ownership, I repeated it, I, to endlessly. I'm not an attorney, and I'm certainly not a judge, and can't comment on the validity of a deed. That's not something that town planner can, I feel the town planner should be doing. So we're working with the knowledge we have and the ability. Now, as we discussed, I think it was earlier, this meeting, um, who gets the order? Who's responsible? When you know someone is responsible for something, whether it's a tenant, whether it's person I otherwise occupying a property and or the record owner. The zoning officer has the discretion to notify the individual or parties or multiple parties, if it's a layered process, they can determine who it is, they feel they could call out first to remedy the situation. So it started, I, and I I don't have the enforcement file, but I think it started with the um, the owner that pops up as
Mm-hmm.
Record owner for forty-four, but then knowing that the Kokomo entities were are parties to the um, property, we pursued getting enforcement from them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll note for the record that the regulations put tall grass under unsightly materials, um, and it's, but there is no requirement for a certain distance from a house um, or portions of property to be mowed and maintained as lawn. And a lot of people have woods in their backyard, a lot of people have decided to let a portion of their property go in a more natural environment, as long as they keep what is determined by zoning as a free space around the house orderly, doesn't become unsightly with regard to, um, you know, particularly where we have situations where weeds and vines start growing up over a house, or you can't walk around the house and get to doors, you know, we've, and generally, somewhere in this range is around, you know, the eighteen inches, um, especially at this time, in the Aprils, when you have rain every weekend and what have you, I mean, it's different when you have a landscaper going to out. Yeah, you don't have, so.
So Maureen is your.
No, there's enforceability that we're trying, vacant land, we don't.
Please, please, yep, it's not appropriate.
So that is a general statement with regard to unsightly materials with regard to um, tall grass. Not necessarily in this case, we did pursue Mr. Kokomo to mow the lawn.
Just one, one question to Maureen, um, is one of the issues, I mean, obviously, if we're talking about blight, the issue is, the town council would have to designate, or whatever authority would have to designate the property as a blighted property, that has not happened.
If it was blight, we have unsightly materials in our zoning, in our zoning regulations, there's a provision for unsightly materials that includes tall grass.
Okay, what's the enforcement penalty for, for unsightly materials?
Um, it would be, yeah, eventually, yeah.
So there's a.
I, I will say, um, almost always by the time you pass the appeal period. And, um, and the response. It's been mowed.
Good.
Or otherwise, they've convinced the zoning officer that it's a habitat that. They want to ma- ma- maintain so far out into their acreage. And, and let the rest revert to an act.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I think more of the point was, yeah. Who, who exactly owns this property? But I, I do understand that that is not. For you to determine. But again, that sort of relates to the point of. How mismanaged this has been from the very beginning. And I think as a citizen of this town, how concerning it is that the town wants to do business this way? To do after the fact business. As a resident who is a taxpayer, that is not something that sits well with me and it is not something that I'm okay with. And yes, the property was weed whacked, it was not mowed. And to Charlie's point, it was done to standards, just like this house is going to be built to your exact standards minimally. Which seems, this is how this is conducted. I think the other concern we have again is, is the water and the drainage issue. We have two sub pumps in our house. And even with that, we still experience flooding in our property. So to everyone else's point, this is only going to further that. We do live on a downhill. You know, I think the water, as the question before, it, it comes from Shadow Meadow and it, and it comes down. And it's an issue on the street. So I would like to reiterate that point again.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a comment?
If you wanna, if you wanna let the rest of the public that wishes to speak, speak, then I would like to make some comments.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else from the audience that would like to make comments? Come on up. Hello?
My name is Kim Downs. I live on four Lincoln Street. And I came to this hearing tonight to just try to understand how this would, you could fit anything in this lot. It's, I've, I've lived in my house since, or our house since nineteen ninety-nine. And it is. Way out of character, even think that they could build on this lot. With a tower and the wires that will be almost directly over it, the house. I, I took an aerial and went down the line of the wires that you can do online. And there is not a house at all near these wires like this would be. I, I don't know, I mean, you must be just going up to the, the requirements which, which are allowable. Other than that. I, I, I guess it, it's meeting the bare minimal requirements that are, that that can happen. But as far as the neighborhood and what is in this area with nineteen forty, nineteen twenty, ninety. Yeah, I agree, this doesn't stay the way always. But it's literally putting a postage stamp on a piece of property with absolutely no lawn or anything else. And the person that's living on Randdecker looking directly at their house as, as they're at their front door. Other than that, just to confirm. In all my years, we've always had issues in that area with water in basements. And since ever source came through a few years ago and knocked down a bunch of trees. All of our neighbors are complaining of more water and more issues in regards to the water in their basement. So I can just imagine what all this would do i- if this is allowed. So I'm just giving my opposition for this.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else from the audience? Okay, at this time, anybody that is joining us remotely? If you have comments that you'd like to offer to the commission on this application, please raise your hand. Anybody from?
Sharing so that maybe it's even bigger because.
Oh, Kathleen's iPad or is that your mouse?
Oh, that's my.
That's her.
Oh, no, I don't think it is. No, that's mine. That's my hand. Sorry.
Anybody from, anybody joining us remotely? If you would like to offer comment on this application now is the opportunity. Okay, it appears there are no takers. Jennifer?
Okay, I just want to offer you some guidance. Again, going back to my initial comment. What's before you is a re-subdivision application and you are required to hear the application that was submitted. So just let me make that point to the interested members of the public. And it is a public hearing, they can certainly come and make whatever comments they'd like. But what you have to focus on is this is an administrative act for you. So you need to determine whether or not this meets your subdivision regu- regulations. And I just want to point out specifically with regard to the policies. And then this, this. It's in section two, under your general provisions. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to kind of. It's twenty point oh three, your policies. Twenty point oh three one, land subdivision is considered as a part of a plan for the orderly, efficient and economical development of the town. Twenty point oh three two, land to be subdivided shall be of such character that it can be used safely for building purposes. Without danger to health or peril from fire, flood or other menace. Twenty. I, I keep saying point, but col- colon, oh, three, three. Proper provision shall be made for vehicular and pedestrian traffic, drainage, water, surge and other needed improvements. Twenty point oh three four, proposed street shall compose a convenient system. Forming to the official map and shall be properly related to the proposals shown on the town plan as it is adopted by the planning commission. Twenty point oh three five, streets shall be of such width, grade and alignment as to accommodate the prospective traffic. To afford adequate light and air and to facilitate fire protection. And twenty point oh three six, in proper cases, park areas of suitable location, size and characteristics for playgrounds and other recreational purposes shall be shown on the subdivision plot. And I'm not going to go through, you also have obviously standards for subdivision design. On some of the comments that you heard sort of go to that. And that's in article five. It's sections fifty to fifty-seven of article five. So I just wanted again, draw here. Going to what? Need to do here as far as the action that you're taking? Because when you act on a subdivision or re-subdivision application, you're acting in your planning capacity. You need to focus on your, your subdivision policies. You need to focus on your standards for design and so on and so forth to determine. Again, from administrative perspective, whether or not this application should be approved or granted. So as far as all the other things that are going on. The reason why I made the statement in the beginning that I did is because I understand that people want to talk about those issues. I've seen some of the emails that have gone back and forth. Staff, corporation council are not. Title, insurance company for anybody who's received. Either of these pieces of property at this point. And I, you know, th- this is, this is the thing, we're going off into the weeds. I, I gave an opinion and I want to make a very clear about something. The history here is that there was a prior re-subdivision application that was submitted. It was withdrawn. It was submitted because staff said that she did not agree that they were entitled to a first cut or free split. She has maintained that from the get-go. So this idea that, you know, some, the town is letting them do something here that the town shouldn't be letting them do. It, it's not the facts. And, and I understand that people may be unaware of, of that. And it's not, listen, it's, it's a typical question that's posed to staff. You know, planning and zoning administrators, planners across the street state, you know, people take the position, they're entitled to a first cut, free split. And, you know, administrator, planner will say, give me what you got. So, you know, she did research on this and she found, and she was very upfront. About the fact that she could not find the origination of the lot. To, to support their claim that they were entitled to a first cut. And that predates again, the prior sub- re-subdivision application that you received. There was a question, and I think we do need to go back. There was a question from somebody about, you know, what was the change in, in the regulations in the building square? And I think we need to answer that because we want the public to understand. Why that's been eliminated as an issue for this application when it wasn't issue in the last one. And may, I don't know why they withdrew, but maybe the reason why they decided to withdraw the prior application. But the position of the town has never changed. You know, of the town planner or your corporation council. Me, in this instance, not Jeffrey, but me. And, you know, the, the position is that we believe they were not entitled to a first cut free split. And that's why they're before you. Because the statute requires the approval, and I'm speaking of Connecticut general statute, dash twenty-five. And again, I, I get that people, you know, they want us to answer this question of who are the, who the owner is. That is a title issue. If a certificate of title was issued, we don't have it in our possession. We have no idea whether there was an exception made. Because there was no planning and zoning approval received. And the history is on, on the record that there have been prior re-subdivision applications looks like, which was the originating piece of property. I don't want to get into all that because we could talk about it for hours. Because there's a history and there's always a history. So, you know, I, I, but I don't want the public to believe that we haven't. Taken the position that we have from the very get-go. We're going back months. So, but that's not what's before you. You can't consider that, you can't any of it. You've got to decide are the regs met or the regs not met? You're acting in your planning capacity, it's administrative in nature. You got to look at your policies, you got to look at the design standards. Are you satisfied that what's in your regulations are met or not? I can't get into all of that. And, and the enforcement issue, you know, again, you, you know, we talk about grass. This is an issue. Now we have this, you, no mo may. Some communities are embracing that. You know, and I keep hearing about this no mo may, it's, you know, and some towns are saying, well, we're not recognizing that. Not a town that is recognizing that, they're going out, they're issuing letters. I want to say one thing about enforcement, that's a very important. Because it is the expectation of our courts, okay? If we're gonna, if we're gonna go and we're gonna ask to, to, for a court to take action against somebody because they're not maintaining their property. When, when your zoning enforcement officer issues a notice of violation or cease and desist order. Because they believe that there's a violation, the most important thing in that notice. And the most important thing in that order is what action the property owner needs to take to bring that property in compliance. The court has an expectation that your enforcement officer, who is your agent, enforcing your regulations. That they are giving an opportunity to the affected property owner to remedy.
Talk about it in a way that just most humans aren't able to talk about it. And you were able to bring the jury into your journey of.
Excuse me, hello? Meet them, yeah.
Trying, I'm sorry, but.
My goodness.
So that's, that's a really important thing for people to know. Is that they have to include that in the order, they have to give that timeframe to remedy. And John can speak to this, I mean, he knows this as a corporation council.
Yeah, you gotta cite the specific violation, you have to cite the code section and you have to give them a reasonable amount of time, which might be two days, might be seven days. It depends on how, how much, how far the property is out of compliance. But yeah, you have to give the opportunity to cure first. And usually that, that notice is scary enough where someone's gonna take notice like, like Attorney Copola said.
Can I comment on the, just, and this is anecdotal, but. One of the complaints that came in about tall grass, our zoning officer went out. He did not find it met the parameters of an order at that time. You know, clearly, you know, this time of year, it takes two more days and it, and it could. But that day, he went out immediately, which, given the time of year, the number of tall grass complaints we get. We do get, it's, it's quite large. And prioritize this one, knew it was a hot topic. I just wanted to say that because I do think he's doing a fantastic job of being responsive. And I wanted the permission to know.
Thank you. We have.
Does anybody have any questions on the commission for me about what I said? Go ahead, Mr. Zigmo.
I'm like, it's big. Beginning half my life.
Microphone on?
Yes.
Yeah, it is now. And I know this was originally a subdivision of the Eddie property and then around the corner. So I, I, I know it's not the free cop. You know, I. My newspaper bureau here was here all my life and kid. I lived on Lincoln Street all my life. Not this section of Lincoln Street, but I lived on Lincoln Street all my life. And known most of those neighbors there and the houses. I do agree that Club Drive, Randdecker Lane. I was growing up and it still is, was the neighborhood. Okay, uh, the country club. Neighborhood and, and stuff like that. So the concern of a home going in there, that's not in that labor of the neighborhood. I understand that the, the homeowner's concerned about that. But I do see other legal problems, what you said, what you, it's problem is, is, yeah, it's probably a. Someone's insurance still worry about it. You know, it's not a deed. But I have a problem. Knowing that it's not a first split. Of proving something. That would be questionable to my thing, okay? It's not a, it's not a free split off forty-four.
I, I don't, I don't understand.
It's not a free split off of forty-four, you know, you know, one time split.
That, that's not what we're being charged with though.
No, I know it's not what it's being charged with. But, but we approving something. That has a history. To it that I see. I don't want to exacerbate the, the situation by approving something. And our regulations, we allow that one split. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's a third or a fourth split. Off the Eddie property. You know?
That is of no consequence from a legal perspective though, Mr. Zigmo. The, the, the fact is that, again, you know. What you're looking at.
I, I know exactly what you said.
It's, it's the law that allow, it's, it's, it's more than. In your regulations, but it's the law that allows the, the first cut free split. But the law also allows re-subdivision. And, and yes, it's occurred. I mean, I think that the history is such and I, and I, you know, I think if, I don't know if Attorney Reiner, what research he did and didn't do. But the. Again, you are acting in your planning function, you are determining. You are determining from an administrative perspective. Whether or not the requirements of your subdivision regulations. Have been met with what's been posed in front of you as a re-subdivision. And you 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 are not to go back into, oh, this is the fourth of it. It is of no consequence. The law does not allow that.
I I I take your, I take your legal uh. Knowledge uh, and heart. Because I trust you awful lot as our town attorney.
I appreciate that.
And uh, just don't feel right.
Other question, so, um, so getting touching on what Commissioner Zigmod said. The the fact that there may have been this this past um. Possible split as of right and this this transfer by deed is immaterial to the commission's action tonight. That is not a consequence, we are not to think that is non-existent as far as we're concerned.
As far as you're concerned, it is not something that should at all um, be involved in your consideration of this application.
Thank you.
Other commission questions? Okay, um, Mr. Kokomo, do you have other comments, responses to comments?
Can I add a staff comment that was pointed out before Mr. Kokomo continues? So in your, all right, um, the, in your supplemental package, you did get comments. That I didn't read from our town engineer. Uh, he did those remotely today, he had been working on this for a number of, you know, he's had these. So, um, I'm just gonna read his comment. So it was received after I wrote the staff report, so they're not included in that. No exception taken on the proposed subdivision from an engineering perspective. Minor comments below, one, the developer of new lot five A should coordinate details of water and sanitary sewer connections. Um, parentheses and sanitary cleanouts parentheses with the Kensington Fire District before submitting a building permit application. And typos, and two, typos on the accompanying sheets should be corrected before filing record drawings with the town clerk. And that was dated by Michael S. Ahern, P E, five thirty twenty-four down, and he's the town engineer. And director of Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you, a couple of quick notes uh, in regard to some of the public comment and um, just to reiterate some of the. Uh, state, uh, one quick point by Attorney Cola. Um, she gave you the background of the subdivision. Requirements and regulations, and one of the things she stated was uh, standards. And um, and I'd heard a neighbor leave from thirty-one Drive. He's been there about five years and he he spoke about standards, uh, just a quick history lesson for a lot of the neighbors. Uh, next door to to a thirty-one Club Drive and fifty-seven Club Drive, one of the other neighbors who spoke tonight. Uh, I was down this road before, before you. Ms. George, you may have been here with forty-seven Club Drive, created that split, developed a house that. I believe and uh, conforms very well to the neighborhood. Uh, I was also the impetus for the subdivision across the street, the homes haven't. Haven't been built yet, I I'm not the owner, but I worked with the club president, Mr. Manning, way back in ninety-nine or so. I've uh, cleaned up the neighborhood, forty-four Randdecker Drive. Around the corner at Chatham, my mother lives in the neighborhood, done lots of stuff in the neighborhood, so um. I'm familiar with the neighborhood, I'm familiar with the standards, and what is proposed is just a box. Uh, what's allowed and what's allowed by right. We don't make the regulations, as you're aware, we just conform to the regulations and I guess eighty. Club Drive said it was an inch or a foot and a half, or whatever he may have said. As long as it meets those regulations and no setbacks, doesn't matter if it's a half an inch. Eight eight, uh, Randdecker, or I'm sorry, uh, four Lincoln spoke about water. And um, I believe somebody else did eight Randdecker may have as well. Though, you you know, that's uh, that's probably, uh, hate to throw Mike or Hearn and Public Works under the bus, but. There there it does, I've been on that road plenty of times and the wa- the velocity is heavy. Uh, I don't believe our our house, new regulations in the in the state of Connecticut is zero. Zero uh, um, impact, therefore, uh. The the new, the impervious, if there's more impervious, though, we need to have the leaders to to locations where. The water goes underground, so uh, we won't contribute, Mr. Ahern will will note that with the building permit. He didn't see a problem with his comments that Maureen read. I believe there's a pre-existing problem that, you know, maybe the neighbor should really uh, speak to Public Works about. Other than that, um, all the other nonsense was more of a civil civil matter, I don't. Uh, in regard to the the cutting of the grass, I I um. Uh, we've had those discussions, uh, and once, I I I. Own lots and lots in town and have done plenty of subdivisions. And uh, quite frankly, I take pride in them, and some of those homes are probably the highest taxpayers in this town that I've sold them to, so. Those standards will be met in this neighborhood, but um, the the uh, the fact that the lawn isn't cut. Oh, I I I had a little bit of a disagreement with Maureen, I was not aware that vacant lots had to have the grass. Um, so if that's a, if that's a regulation, she seems to have pulled that up, uh, we'll 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 bi-weekly cut it, I guess. Uh, well, that's, that's really it, I I I don't know what else I can add other than um, I. They may not have the confidence, but uh, once the neighbor, once the house is in there, uh, fifteen years from now. It'll it'll be fine, just like uh, forty-seven Club Drive or Round Hill Road, the other ones we've done around the corner. Um, and lastly, please, don't cut my yard, uh, or please, you know, don't cut our grass, we don't want anyone to fall, they lost their earbuds. I don't want them to trespass any longer and hurt themselves, so that's important to know.
Yes, it is. Commissioners, any questions?
Not a question, but to address the comment of the building square earlier. Pretty recently, we were. Basically, I call it housekeeping, we had an issue of uh, the definition of building square in our interpretation of it. And um, we found that as long as a building square which determines that the lot is legitimate. Um, can fit on, as long as a building square was legitimate and can fit on the lot. Then only the structures within it have to meet the setbacks of the zone. So not the building square itself.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, any other comments, questions from the commission? Okay, um, any last thoughts from the audience before we close the public hearing? Manup, please identify yourself again.
Very old, I'm being, um, it will not be fine in fifteen years, the house that you crowbarred in down the.
It's no, no, through the chair, through the chair.
Experience flooding. How's you built to experience flooding at forty-seven?
You have to address the commission.
Sorry, the house experiences flooding at forty-seven Club, it's not fine. Um, and neither will the house that is planned to be crowbarred in there, I understand that this is about subdivision. But how can you subdivide something after the fact? I just am not understanding that, I guess, and maybe it's a legal thing. But again, uh, also that and Attorney did bring up about what changed that all of a sudden a house can go there. He withdrew the application because he couldn't build the house, now he's going through the subdivision because all of a sudden he can build the house. That's what's happening, so why and how is all of a sudden brought back up?
Attorney Coppola already addressed those questions earlier.
All right, then I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Please come to the podium and identify yourself again.
Sharon Cooper, eight Randdecker, um, so a lot of these houses have um. Sheds of some sort and or some additional, so I'm wondering if you're that close to the line. Uh, does that mean that that house can't have any additional or? Like, I'm just wondering, will that be outlined? Because what happens is once something is there, people start building and nobody goes back to the regulations to say. Oh, there's only an inch and a half, or there's a foot and a half, you can't build a shed there, you can't put a shed.
So they would need to stay within the the setback requirements, just like any other neighbor in the neighborhood would be required.
Know that because it's going to be so.
When the neighbors complain.
That feels like the onus of the burden. Already telling you it's not a good idea, and the builder wants to build because that's how they make their money. But the neighborhood and the neighbors know what's gonna happen, and we're just asking to be thoughtful about. Property, that's all.
I suggest that really quickly, so there's, we have um, two mechanisms for somebody. Adding structure to their property. If they're putting an addition on a, on a primary structure, they need a building permit. They'd be violating building code if they did not apply for a building permit. Part of the building permit process is, it comes through the zoning department and we make sure that it meets zoning requirements. That zoning sign-off is necessary for. Virtually all buildings.
Including a shed.
And sheds, depending on the size, may not need a building permit, but they do need a certificate of zoning compliance. As do fences, as do. Structures, you know, and it's a variety of structures, we don't consider playfords. Playfords aren't, you know, have been um, determined by the commission not to require it, however, um, pools. Sheds, the, I, gazebo's. Should be obtaining at at minimum a certificate of zoning compliance, they'd be coming in, they'd be taking a copy of. Maybe uh, the the homeowner is responsible to um, make sure that a copy of their plot plan. Which at this point in in history, we um, get as-built plot plans, so if they propose a house that's. Required to be. Um, twenty feet from a property line and that, and they propose a house. Twenty-two feet from the property line and then the guy goes out with the excavator and the concrete and it ends up at twenty-one feet. But it still meets the twenty-foot requirement, they provide an as-built, um, before they get their C O for the house. Now, some of our older homes don't have, they're they're proposed houses that we have plans for, but. And the, and one of the gentlemen's talked about a very old house, there's probably no plan at all. Um, unless he, they did renovation work. But the um, that comes, they bring it in with a certificate of zoning compliance, they tell us, they they. Gale off on that plan where that shed's going and we make sure it meets the zoning requirements.
And if they put it up without doing that process.
They get a zoning violation, once we know about it.
But once it's there.
So for sheds that are, and we're kind of getting in the weeds here.
I was just gonna say, I think we're um, getting outside of the the scope of this application altogether.
But this is in um, a perfect world, it fits within a spot. But we're living in the real world and it's pushing the limits of the spot, so. I'm just bringing it to your attention and it's all I can do.
Thank you. One more, in the interest of time, we'd like to move on, so.
Um, do I understand correctly that the reason this is can be resubmitted is because they let the grass grow and it's considered blighted now?
No, no.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
So I did want to um, speak to a couple of things, and I hope I remember the things I wanted to speak to. I made notes, but I've tried to keep notes on what everybody's commenting on. So, or I know the commission members are, probably have this very clear in their brain. But last year, we had a developer for another property in town, and I think I even addressed it in the staff report. Another property in town who came in with their subdivision plan, they've also um, subdivided numerous times. Um, as did, as their engineer for decades. And um, there was a disagreement with how I was applying the building square. Requirements and advising the commission and how they felt they. What they stated, what they were saying for years. And and I I recall correctly, it was about twenty sixteen, there was an attempt to clarify it. Tried to go back and listen to the tapes, I went through the staff reports, I listened to. Old tapes on my kid's old C D player so that I could listen. I grabbed that out of the basement, um, and so I could listen to the recordings of the the meeting in twenty sixteen. Um, and then the commission directed me to clarify, to come up with language to clarify the building square regulation again. Which was basically to um, that the building square did not have. That's required for any subdivided lot, did not have to meet the setback requirements. It could be somewhere on the lot, but not have to meet the setback requirements and um. And one of the items noted was for odd-shaped lots, odd-long lots and corner lots. Where the setback requirements may be skewed and that whole entire square may not fit, but the square is about usability. And so that amendment that was proposed at your direction was approved last fall. And it changed the application of the building square on the proposed subdivision. Um, here as well, it was gonna impact a number of. Number of vacant lots that we heard about, and this was one of them, or or larger lots, I should say. It was approved, so.
So, um, I just want to raise again, because this issue of drainage, um. Your improve, the improvement section of your subdivision regulation, it talks about drainage improvements, but the. The first sentence of it is very important, it says, all improvements shall be constructed in accordance with the Town of Berlin Design and Construction specifications and standards. And imperants, town standards, and specific plans approved by the Planning Commission and the Town Engineer, and it goes on, oh. Sorry, my computer turned out for some reason. Um, and but but in section fifty-two, fifty-two one oh two. There is a drainage improvement section, it is quite lengthy, it says, uh, the developer may be required. By the Planning Commission to carry away by pipe or open dip ditch. Itch, itch, not dip, any spring or subsurface water that may exist. Either previous to or as a result of the subdivision. Such drainage facility shall be located in the road right-of-way where feasible. And or in perpetual unobstructed easements of appropriate width. A culvert or other drainage facility shall in each case be large enough to accommodate potential runoff from its entire upstream drainage area. Whether inside or outside the subdivision, Town Engineer shall approve of the size of facility based on anticipated runoff from hundred-year storm. Under conditions of total potential watershed development, the Town Engineer may require that the subdivision provide prior approval of the subdivision. An acceptable drainage base and study by a professional engineer with drainage expertise, including the effect of each subdivision on existing downstream drainage facilities. Outside the area of subdivision drainage study will also analyze the need for a net zero increase in stormwater runoff unless the Town Engineer concludes that said design will result. Increasing the normal peak in stormwater runoff and that this increase will be detrimental to properties within the watershed. Where it is anticipated that the additional runoff incident to the development of the subdivision will overload an existing downstream drainage facility during a hundred-year storm. Planning Commission shall notice, notify the executive board, town council, or other appropriate owners of downstream property of such potential conditions. In such cases, the Planning Commission may withhold approval of the subdivision until provision has been made for the improvement of said potential condition. The commission may require the installation of stormwater management system which could include both detention retention systems. Which will restrict discharges of stormwater from the subdivision to no more than the flow's existing prior to development. So I just want to mention that, because again, um, I think the drainage. So, I just want to mention that, because again, I think the drainage comments fall into a category of something that you should be considering, certainly, under your regulations. And it goes on, but I'm not gonna... It's very lengthy. I'm not gonna... I just wanted to give you a bit of it.
And so, the review that our town engineer does is with that in mind, I would presume?
Well, again, you know, he is not here, he's not participating. So, he hasn't received this information about what's been reported from the public. It may be something that, you know, he may think is necessary to act upon. I don't know the answer to that question. I'm pointing it out to you for that reason, though.
Ms. Daley?
With that in mind, would this be an appropriate time to maybe consider keeping this open and continuing?
The pleasure of the commission.
I agree with you. I think we should continue this. We have a lot of testimony that we've taken. We have some homework that we really... I think I need to do to read up on. So, I would like to agree with June and say, yes, we should continue this.
Give the engineer a chance, maybe, to look at things.
He can review the recording of tonight's meeting, what the testimony has been with regard to the drainage.
I just... I have a question. So, it looks like we've already used some extension days. Was that for the opening of the public hearing, or?
Yeah, it was just open tonight, right?
Okay, tonight, it was just open, so...
I believe you opened. You opened it.
We did, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm flipping to the right page. Yeah, must open by 5/4, so 26 days today. And, but now, once it's opened, you have 35 days to close it.
Okay.
So, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we continue with open public and continue on to, what, June 6th? I guess we need to put a date on that.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion that's been seconded to continue this item to June 6th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, so, our engineer will consider the comments with respect to the water issues, and we will revisit this at our next meeting. Next item on the agenda, special permit with site plan amendment, application of Harrison Polterak at 232 Mill Street for Rebel Dog Coffee Company Berlin in the CCD 2 zone. Hello?
I'm not sure of room. For the record, my name is Harrison Polterak, actually owner of Rebel Dog Coffee Company, 47 Northampton Lane, Plainville, Connecticut. I have authority to speak on behalf of the property owner of 232 Mill Street, Berlin, Connecticut, which is Costas Biakis. As you're hopefully aware, we're looking to occupy the first floor of 232 Mill Street to operate a location of Rebel Dog Coffee Co., which is a specialty coffee shop that serves light breakfast and lunch fare as well. And with that occupation of that space, we are also looking to repave the lot with permission from the business, the property owner as well. We got DOT approval of the drawings that I hope should be in your packet. And then, we received some staff comments that I think we can address tonight as well with some solutions, and hopefully move forward. So, I want to get started with those staff comments. I can just kind of go down the list. So, I guess we'll start with, there was concern of the addition of the exterior walk-in cooler that would have access from inside the space. I know there were some concerns from the Health Department in regards to that walk-in cooler. We have decided that that is not a necessary addition to the property. So, we'd be eliminating that from the plans. You can see that on the west side facing the building, proposed walk-in cooler. So, that would be the only modification to the building structure, be that walk-in floor. So, that is being eliminated from the plan in its entirety. We feel that will suffice for any concerns from the Health Department at this point. As well as, we realized that our current dumpster placement, if we want to provide screening, it's on sewer easement. So, we've decided to move that to the west side or the right side of the existing garage. We have, right now, it's labeled as tenant parking, but with the existing garage, and in front of that garage space would suffice for tenant parking. So, by moving that dumpster to the other side, allows us to provide screening without building on top of a sewer easement, causing the issues in that garden. With our current plan for the parking spaces, we show a total of 14 spaces, really with our concept, even though we're just going to be grab-and-go, try to maximize on the available parking spaces for customers. It came to my attention that spots 13 and 14 do encroach slightly onto historic zoning. Suggestions were to eliminate those spaces and try to shift the rest to the west. Unfortunately, we were really looking to, again, maximize as much parking as possible. So, we hope to submit an application through the Historic District to hopefully get approval for those two spaces to encroach onto their... Onto that zone. In regards to landscaping, at the moment, we plan to keep the existing landscaping in the center island in front of the building, as well as the trees that exist now, keeping all that landscaping the same. We would like to provide some landscape screening between the abutting fence to the residential lot. And we would pretty much continue that around the parking spaces, but we want to make sure that we also allow space for snow removal. So, we're looking now east, all the way to the side of that parking lot, kind of stopping the landscaping at some point, so we have proper snow removal space as well. I believe that was... I'm not forgetting anything. We're gonna find to have some comments, but I think that was kind of the main issues that were the comments from the staff, and we're then happy to answer any questions.
I don't see in the plan, but I just want to be clear that the application does not include a drive-up window?
No, drive-through window.
I have a question. I'm looking at the floor layout, and it looks like you have a... You do have a bathroom. But, do... Is that going to be open to the public?
So, in regards to having no seating inside in town code, what I believe I read, that it's not required to have a public restroom with the square footage of that space.
The reason why I ask is, if you did, they have to walk through the prep room, the food prep area, which would not be up... I don't think that's up to code. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Maureen, you have comments?
So, I'm not sure everybody... So, I brought up the floor plan, just so you can see where Commissioner Miller was talking about the bathroom. And again, it's my understanding, and of course, it would all be subject to building code review as well, which was not that particular. It was not called out, and Health District approval. So, they, regardless, they can't open until they have Health Code approval. So, that's... And with the elimination of the walk-in cooler that was shown on the outside there, preliminary comments, very preliminary, didn't do the full review, because he didn't have the menu, was that it seemed feasible, the layout he was seeing. Again, that was a preliminary conversation with him, because he said he needs the menu in order to actually do their full approval, and so, a permit fee to them. But, now, I'll go back to the map set. Because this was digitally given to me, it has all these yellow comment marks on it, and I can't... I don't... I tried a couple of times. So, again, you're losing that. My suggestion was, and thought is, if the commission is inclined to approve this application, that it be with the modification to the plan, that he... They shift the parking spaces to as close to the garage as they can, you know, as far down as they can, so that they put the parking at the existing edge of pavement. The site was inspected and found to have asphalt under there. Therefore, the Historic District, as far as the Historic District goes, and the Historic District line follows the zone line, which is what's designated as Lot B. It's this triangular piece is Lot B. Currently, the gravel goes... You... I want to say that line there. And again, oh, I'll use this. This cursor's bigger, so it's actually better for you guys to see at a distance. So, goes to this point here, and so, you've got these two spaces. You shift down, you probably would lose one space, but not the 2 1/4 that will probably fit or close. You might lose two spaces. And then, if Historic District allows them to end the zoning, I have to double-check the zoning for the encroachment, because you're allowed to encroach a commercial use so far into a residential zone. And I didn't look at that criteria, because that came up afterwards, that he was going to try to get that approval from the Historic District. So, before... And that's for parking, because the Historic District does have to look at parking within the Historic District. But, again, otherwise, it's an existing condition. The town engineer was a bit concerned with the sheet flow across the property, particularly when we first evaluated the plan, and this was labeled as gravel, and the parking was increased, new impervious surface where the cooler that's no longer going to be there will be. And these two new parking spaces, there is already impervious surface on the side of the building, but it doesn't extend to these new parking spaces. However, earlier this week, before I met with the applicant, and actually immediately after as well, when he said he was eliminating that, and if he did get rid of the two parking spaces, the town engineer's comments are in your report or in your packages. But, basically, what they say is, he's not concerned with the sheet runoff. It generally runs in this direction. There's a catch basin over here, but he believes they should consider putting in a dry well to just mitigate any wetness, because there is low-lying areas over here. So, they consider a dry well. He'd then work to review with them, and otherwise, doesn't take exception to the plan with that regard. The landscaping, something that the commission has under their discretion for land review, as well as screening around the dumpster. As Mr. Polak said, well, I was concerned that the zoning requirements require screening and over an easement, that would usually be a problem. So, he's offered to move the dumpster, and it just has to be compliant with the regulations. Again, the cooler had another problem, that it's a non-conforming setback of the building, and the cooler wouldn't be allowed to go in that specific location by zoning anyway.
Okay.
I think I hit everything. You did get my staff report, but I want to eliminate number seven and add number 11, which was landscaping, which he's discussed. And I do encourage landscaping. You know, there is a long fence along this whole property line up to the back of the building to the south that's residential. I encourage them to consider something ornamental or shrubbery around the side of the park.
Okay. Just for clarification, I'm trying to see where all your parking is. I see the handicap parking, and then, the parking along the little triangle, is that all the parking that's going to be there?
Yes, those three spaces.
Okay, and how many employees do you have? Because I've been in these, and there... You have a lot of employees in there, maybe seven?
I would say with this location, seven. I would say maybe at most four to five.
Okay, and you have three, how many spaces for parking? Where are your employees going to park?
Existing parking, or we would, you know, work with the building owner as well to, if we can provide tenant parking and the dumpster in the same area as well, you know, we can use that existing garage in front of it as employee parking as well.
Okay, and Maureen, my question to you, you talk about moving the triangle, moving them closer to the garage, and you have the sewer easement there, which I believe is going to be grass. Can you move?
No, that's pavement.
That's pavement?
And you can park on an easement. You can... Yeah, that's not permanent.
Okay.
And it already is paved, according to the plan and the site.
All right, all right, thank you.
I am correct.
But, I...
It's been a while since I went out there.
Okay.
The engineer went recently. I went a while back, because this application has actually been trying to be worked through since last summer. And I do want to note for the record that we do have a DOT approval letter. Looked at the wrong thing. We do have a letter dated February 29, 24. So, when he first came to us, we said to him, you know, just by looking at the map set, you can see that this is the property line. Let me do it with a big one. This is the property line right here. This has all been utilized by what was the vacuum cleaner store for however long, and the edge of pavement and curb line is actually way out here. Their initial plan, I think anyone doing it didn't realize, they were working off of a plan, didn't realize it wasn't their property, and were like, "You got parking on DOT land. You go talk to DOT." And consequently, they went through that process before resubmitting their application.
So, could there potentially be a parking issue here? If you have five employees, and your customers come in, and they can't park with... It's not their property to allow anybody to park. And we used to do it too. I would go there all the time. Didn't know I put a park there.
They got the approval for those parking spaces that are shown on state land.
So, in the front there?
It was three spaces.
Okay.
The three along the front, and see, they gave us back the... I'm sorry, I keep getting them wrong. I think we had... Guess we didn't have a plan with it too. I thought we had a...
So, you don't foresee any issues?
So, as far as the... The parking requirements require one per 125 for the fast-food use, plus two spaces for the residential use. So, meeting the regulations, if it's a popular coffee spot, there'd be parking problem. Yes, I do believe there could be, because it is a limited lot area, and that's why he's looking to pursue with Historic District being able to extend the parking into that lot. And I can bring that up, the aerial up too, so you can kind of see how it already exists. Right now, the dumpster's out there in the middle of kind of area out there for loading, at least in one view I had.
I may as well just address, you know, potential parking. Well, you know, in our other operations, about 90% of our sales is on mobile orders. So, you really don't see, especially with no seating at this location, you're not going to see a lingering of traffic to fill these spots long enough to create any type of, you know, traffic jam or people parking road or anything like that. So, hence why we'd love to have seating inside, you know, for people to come and enjoy the space. But, we'd still like to be serving the community and, you know, at least offer an easy takeout. Uh, but we'd still like to be serving the community and, uh, you know, and at least offer an easy, uh, takeout option as well.
The reason why I am, because I've been to the one we have dating, but it was pretty crowded.
Just go be, grab it. Yeah, grab, grab and go, yeah.
Where, where are your locations now? We had one East Hartford, Farmington.
Stafford Farms and, and then Plainville is our first location.
Thank you. Or any, this will be your smallest location?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're in public hearing. Anybody from the audience wish to offer comment, Mr. Edge?
So I did just bring up the street view for, and please tell me to bring something up if you want me, if you want to see it on the screen, ask me, I'll try.
Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road, I will make this brief because it is getting late. Um, I have actually been talking to Harrison for a number of years now. Um, interestingly enough, um, we actually were connected because he married my optometrist's daughter. And since he started the process of growing Rebel Dog, I've always had an interest in connecting with him. Um, the good news is, my hope is this may potentially be a first spot. They get to grow bigger at some point. I'm excited about this. Grab and go. Um, definitely they are new, different, and it's a vibe that I like, grew up growing up in Plainville, knowing the fact that, that building used to be very, very different. Um, he did come to Economic Development Commission, answered a number of questions. Uh, they had given him a, uh, unanimously support. Um, and I think one of the great things too about Harrison is the flexibility as well between getting rid of the cooler, moving. There's been a lot back and forth with, um, with the planning staff, which I think is, is good to make this work. And I know it's a, a smaller site. I know the property owner itself, um, was inundated with requests for uses that I think all of us would have been unhappy with. Smoke shops, other things that, I mean, again, this is an entrance property to really our main street. So I'm, I'm excited about this use and have my full support and I, I appreciate everything that the planning staff has done and Harrison's done to try to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, we're still in public hearing. Are there any people joining us remotely that uh, would like to offer comments on this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, uh, does, does, uh, any of the commission have questions, comments, concerns?
Um, I mean, I guess really the only outstanding thing is whether the historical district is gonna grant them those two extra spaces. Um, but is that something that can be dealt with after the fact or?
Oh, what I just could happen, and again, um, commission's discretion, but with the modification to still provide the required, I want to get the number right, but I think it was thirteen spaces, eleven, eleven plus two for the residential use, and those could be the two that are the garage actually. I would count as the residential use, even if they end up with storage in it, like that's what counts as garage, as residential spaces. Um, I would suggest, or, or, um, he muted. Um, Steve, note for the record that Steve Biella joined the meeting. Did he go away good?
No, he's still there. He, he just shut his camera off.
Up top, okay. Um, is that, um, the plan be considered with the recommended modifications? Which are the elimination, the proposed elimination of the cooler and the spaces being shifted um, to the west to remain, to, to be aligned properly on, within the existing pavement. And the dumpster be relocated with the screening that you would, you know, decide is the appropriate screening um, to adjacent to the existing garage on the other side, you know, to the other side of the garage. And, um, and then they get approval from the planet, from the historic district and meet the zoning requirements for further extension of the lot. That, um, you either ask for them to return or um, conditionally approve that, you know, say that should they get that approval, you're fine with the spaces being added at as on the original proposal.
And
The submitted proposal.
And did you mention also some additional landscaping, which I think
In my comment, yeah.
Would be fine to your satisfaction or staff satisfaction, we, I don't think these come exactly for us.
Um, again, those would be all the, the other staff comments.
Okay. Okay. All right, we're in public hearing, so.
I will comment on the, with regard to the landscaping with the amount of, um, area that's under DOT. Um, asking for any landscaping within the DOT area would be problematic, but certainly extending down that triangle could have some, a street tree or something. We know everybody's been, as with her testimony tonight, an awful lot of trees have been disappearing recently. Number of sources. Um, so, um, that, that is one suggestion I have. Other is you wait until it's, you know, you don't close it. So they won't, unfortunately, um, they weren't able to make the meeting for next Monday, is historic district's meeting. They surpassed that deadline. They surpassed the deadline and the ability to notice that this for that meeting. So they wouldn't be on until the July first meeting, they were to go to. If you were to wait, um, I think you'd need an extension to keep the hearing open past the July on historic district. Double check the calendar. We are already at the thirtieth, so you know, there's hope.
Yeah. We have, yes. I think we're all, we're all good and comfortable. I will make the motion to close the public hearing then.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing and seconded, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, so.
I am.
Andre, yep. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, item D, application of Tom Kokomo, Kokomo Brothers to construct an addition and uh, add a propane filling station and wall poles use at one sixty-six unit at two twelve Old Brickyard Lane in the PI zone. Um, I understand there's been an issue with, um, mailing and notice on this.
That was already continued at the beginning of the meeting. You can, I believe, I believe you made the motion.
Okay.
So that was done.
Oh, right, that was the first thing. Okay, so.
Moved it to the beginning of the meeting, that was continued.
That's, that's fine. Then, uh, dress up there, pushing wetland, whatever.
Um, they're working with wetlands? On the that's Old Brickyard you're asking about.
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of the wetlands concerns, uh, there was a restoration plan that was prepared. Essentially. And it's being worked on as far as I know.
So we're not opening the hearing, okay?
The other thing is, uh, the only permits for, well, well, any more? They've been built already?
So you've already acted to continue this matter? We don't have the applicant here to answer that question. I don't know whether, yeah, that's been submitted or not. I don't think Maury knows either. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so next on the agenda is item E, applications of Nicholas Maurizio, uh, care of Colliers International, prepared by attorney Timothy Sullivan. A property owned by five fifty, five fifty-four, Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC in the BT one zone. And, um, so these will continue also.
They will continue. So, uh, we did have a call with attorney Sullivan about doing some revisions to the stipulation before we submitted to the court for action. We do have the eight dash eight in here and the required court hearing um, is scheduled for Tuesday, June the eighteenth at ten AM. A notice is publishing in the New Britain Herald regarding that. And, um, the public can participate. They can observe, they can comment on it. Um, so, uh, that will get posted as well. And information is available through, through the planning and zoning department as well for anybody who's interested. But yes, if you could just continue it until we actually get it approved by the court, that would be great.
So we need a motion to continue.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Right. June sixth, June sixth.
The next meeting, can they continue it to the twentieth, knowing the hearing?
I think you should continue it to the twentieth because then that's beyond when we actually have
The hearing, yeah.
I will amend my motion to continue until our June twentieth meeting.
Second for June twenty.
Okay. So motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, now we move into the deliberation section of the agenda. Uh, item A has been postponed. Um, item B has been continued. And, uh, so that brings us to item C, special permit with site plan amendment, application of Harrison Poltarik at two thirty-two Mill Street for Rebel Dog Coffee Company, Berlin in the CCD two zone. Thoughts, comments?
I will make the motion to approve with the accepted, uh, or with the recommended modifications and conditions by, uh, our own staff.
Second.
Mr. Rogan and, um, Mr. Dyken. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Congratulations. Uh, okay, so item, uh, D, application of Tom Kokomo, Kokomo Brothers has been postponed. Uh, item E, applications of Little House Living LLC, prepared by Christopher J. Smith, Alter and Pearson LLC. Um, this also is to be continued.
So, um, the appeal period has, maybe just a reminder to counsel about it. Um, the appeal period has passed on, uh, the court granting, uh, the stipulated judgment. Um, so, uh, we will look for withdrawal of these applications.
What?
We'll withdraw them.
Wow.
For stipulation.
Yeah.
And then it can go off. So
Good.
Um, you can continue it until next Thursday and
Yeah, I know they're pursuing, that's sixteen, that's the Little House Living, sitting sixteen seventy-six.
Okay.
So he has submitted the building plans that are under review for, that match presumably, I mean, we're checking them to make sure they match the stipulated judgment and all the other departments are checking them for everything they need to check for. Um, and I know they're anxious, so I think we can just be sending them a reminder that this needs the A thirty G applicate, right? That's what this one was, right? A thirty G is part of the stipulation is that that gets withdrawn. And just the reminder, I suspect it just they just didn't do it yet.
Yeah, I think they were waiting to for
In front, we knew they were waiting for the appeal period to, to pass from the court date.
Mm-hmm.
Roger, you look like you have a question.
This is the Little Houses, right?
The Little Houses, this is nineteen.
He's withdrawing the, of suing us, but he's still going to get what he wants and build what he wants, correct?
No, 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 this is Little Houses. This is sixteen seventy-six.
Yeah, next
Berlin Turnpike, which, uh, Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because we already, we already agreed on, he brought another site, brought another planning to us and we thought it was better, so.
Right, you, you, you voted back in December on the stipulated plan, which is the one he's seeking the building permits for. And therefore the, the A thirty G application was being carried along.
Yep.
To make sure that they, you know, they wouldn't want to withdraw it, it would just be
Okay, so we need a motion to continue this item?
I will make them to the twentieth again?
No, next week is fine.
I will make, okay, I'll make the motion to continue until June sixth.
So yeah, Brian, Brian and June, uh, have the motion, um. I missed it. Uh, we have a motion on the floor though. To continue to June sixth, right? Those in favor? Opposed? So moved. Um, and so that was for items uh, one and two for that. Uh, next on the agenda, item F, applications of Nicholas Maurizio Care of Colliers International, uh, prepared by attorney Timothy Sullivan. Uh, this also, I presume we need a motion. It's, it's again on the agenda. Yeah, we just did that. It's duplicated on the okay. Testing us, test, they're testing us. Page three of three, item F, applications.
Oh, it's in deliberation. So it's just carries in deliberation, all the, everything listed under public hearing. It shouldn't be.
No, why wouldn't?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, you didn't do the public hearing.
Right, so we, we did continue it. It was, okay. Um, Planner comments?
Um, really quick. This is a quandary that we got that on New Britain Road where I mean, I'm going to refer to it as the seven eleven. It hasn't been a seven eleven in, I don't know how, I would, I think since I got here, so, but but it's a small market. Um,
Oh, the Happy Market, now it's like Good Day Market or something like that?
We got two in front of them.
Oh, there's a smoke shop, you actually can go in there and sit there and smoke.
Really?
Well, that's Go in there and that's I went in there. And they have a room that's built.
They have a smoking lounge?
Yeah, it's enclosed. It's a big smoking lounge inside of the building.
News to the zoning department.
Stress you didn't need.
What were you doing in there, Scott? No, I went in
Smoking.
To get something to drink and they have this, they built a special room. So you go in there and you could sit and actually smoke in this room.
What are you smoking?
Speaking of
I just asked them.
Speaking of smoking places, I noticed the one next to Kensington Market has a lot of neon lights in their windows.
How about the one, the other one does too?
Yeah, there's one that just popped up next to Kensington Market.
Next to the guest club.
Yeah, yeah.
Their windows are just filled with like neon lights.
I'm to them.
Sorry, Maury.
We never leave before
That's a, that's a different use than, than the zone there, isn't it? A smoke shop where, where that
I think I have to go back to the interpretations of the zone of the
Because there were a couple of things made, decisions made in regard to smoke shops.
A long time ago, yeah.
A number of years ago and I'm inconsistent with that, but I
Zig, six months till we gone, don't worry.
Yeah, so you might want me, so until we investigate whether or not what they have is meets the zoning requirements or they somehow got approval, I'll, um, I don't know if you want me to discuss the fact that they want to have a, so this was my question. They are asking about a, um, no, uh, that vacuum, car vacuum at, at one of the parking spaces. So, so whether that's considered a structure, not a structure, and would be an accessory use. We typically see them as an accessory use that we don't, um, take exception to at car washes and sometimes at um, gas stations, much like an air pump. But you don't typically see them at a, um, uh, I Well, it's a, you determine whether it would be a customary accessory use and whether or not it would have to meet the setback. So not customary, I'm getting feedback. Usually they have a gas station when they have a vacuum and or an air pump. We are seeing more vacuums. I mean, as you drive around the state, you are seeing more vacuums going in adjacent to air pumps, you know, they're kind of the same. At a gas station, I personally haven't necessarily seen them at a convenience store. I think Paul said he has seen them at convenience stores, so. From communities. All right, that was our big question. I'm good, that's fine. No, that was the only thing I remembered.
I just have one item of note, not a complaint or anything, but. The property that used to be Sunny Border Greenhouses on Chamberlain Highway has transferred.
We knew that.
To what though?
We're trying to investigate who who it is. It's a firm from New Jersey, I believe.
They said from Enfield, someone in Enfield bought that through the New Jer, uh, I was talking to Ed Grimm about that.
Also, it wasn't Ed. I was really hoping it was an entity he knew.
Well, no, he's trying to find out who because he tried to buy. In buying it, but he said that.
He had joined, he owns the Jacob property.